Where the hell's the flag?
Next are the minutes of the February 1st meeting. Do we have any comments or motions?
I move we approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have final plan approval for Glenbrook Avenue. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we get started on this, Mr. Chairman, over here.
Yes, okay.
Just a couple of words. This is, all it is, is a combining several existing lots. There are no improvements as part of this plan. And if this was three lots or less, it wouldn't even be before you that Kevin and I could approve this administratively. The fact that it's four lots brings it in front of you tonight. But all they're doing is taking the interior lot lines out, and the applicant can take you through that, but there's no improvements that go along with this project.
Thank you.
That's it, I think I'm done. Good evening, my name's Dave Shula, I'm a land surveyor with Chester Valley Engineers here on behalf of the applicant, TGR LLC. What you just heard is absolutely correct, this is just a consolidation. We're not proposing any construction, demolition, grading, or anything new with this. What the applicant is planning on doing is then, once this is consolidated and it's one lot, he will then be coming back into the township for grading permits to reconfigure the parking lot in the rear of the buildings. My understanding is the buildings are in pretty bad shape. He is going to be rehabbing them and repurposing them as apartments.
Great.
I was super confused because we saw Glenbrook before, but this isn't the other plan we saw, this is the thrift shop and the other stores. Remember a few months, in my head I had this as the other property, but this is just the thrift shop, the old thrift shop and the buildings on Glenbrook.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other board comments, questions?
I move we approve.
Oh, public comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We'd like to get some public comment. Could you please come up? Sorry.
I guess I'm just, like, curious, this is the first time I've...
Please state your name and address.
My name is David. David Mungo, I live in 223 Brook Street.
Thanks.
I guess for, so you're gonna combine the lots? The purpose are to, I guess for a future purpose, is to build more?
At this stage, and Roger, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but let me, if I can just help, I think at this stage, what the applicant wants to do is combine the lots, and when they combine the lots, then they will be subject to a new, like, a different set of ordinances as it relates, because it'll be one lot now and not five lots. So when they combine the lots, then they will come in and they're, have some intention, as we've just heard, to reconfigure some parking and make some renovations. So they will be required, whatever our ordinances require them to do relative to their improvements there, whether it's the parking or the reconditioning of the buildings, then they will come back in with an application as one lot. And will have to conform to our ordinances relative to a one lot plan and relative to their improvements. I don't know if that was helpful, but...
Yeah, well, I guess, what are the current ordinances?
Mr. Chairman, I could probably add to this. The applicant was in front of the zoning hearing board a few months back for some relief to convert some apartments in there and expand the number of apartment uses, as well as some non-residential on the first floor. As a result of that, the parking would have increased, and because of the lot configuration, we couldn't have parking on different lots. So the lot consolidation is just to address a parking issue so that all the parking for this site is on one lot and not on multiple lots.
Does that eliminate the need for a zoning variance?
No, eliminates the need for cross variances that can get very tricky when you have a parking space that may transverse three lots. So it's, you know, they've already been to the zoning hearing board and received the relief that they need to do what they need to do on the site.
So at this point, really, as long as it meets the code, we have no other, really, decision to make. It's not optional whether or not we recommend approval, it's a matter of, they met the guidelines and it's a process, rather than...
So it's a process, I guess...
Rather than an opinion on our part.
No, that's fine, I guess I see some liturgy as opposed to SEPTA, because I know SEPTA is right in that same area, that's all been...
They're basically bringing it under one ownership. It would be like if you wanted to add some ground to your house, for example, and the guy next door would sell you some acreage. So you want to put that acreage into your lot. They're going to change the, put it all under one lot, so that then you would own, or in this case, the individual owns the property, will own all those lots together, and he will develop it as one piece.
I do have one question about this, though. I had it written as a note, I forgot. So in C1, the total impervious coverage is allowed to be 60 percent. And in consolidating these lots, it's actually not on the table what the required for C1 is. So they're going to be going from a range of 89 percent of impervious to, one of them's 100 percent, and the overall average impervious is going to be 93 percent. Is it allowed to consolidate a lot and recreate a non-conformity? Or will they have to bring it down to the 60 percent, 60 percent impervious?
No, what is there is allowed to remain, they don't have to bring it into conformity, it's a legal non-conformity. So from that standpoint, again, they're just, it's more of a technicality issue of removing paper lines that don't exist in space, but they exist on the plan, so that's...
But even in the case where the two of the lots will now have an increased non-conformity?
Well, there's not two lots, it's going to be one lot in total. So you would take the entire impervious coverage as it exists now across the multiple lots. That coverage is not changing under one lot scenario. So the impervious coverage is not changing because they're not making any improvements.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, in two of the lots cases, they have a lower, they have a non-conformity that's lower than what it's going to, the overall lot coverage is going to end up being. So that, I guess that's just allowed.
That lot, they disappear?
No, I understand that they disappear, I understood that.
And it's not a zoning issue.
Okay, that was my question, John.
It's not a zoning issue.
That was really my question, it doesn't create a zoning issue.
Unless they build something or put a building on here.
Okay.
They can wipe out the lines.
All right, well, that was really my question, thank you.
I guess my real question is, like, in the future, and all this is all, like, well and good, I understand that I don't understand a lot of this. If this concurs, and in the future as it moves forward and there's another application to do something else, will the possibility that these properties will be removed and replaced with something else that is the intention or possibility thereof, you know, thereof?
If he removes the properties, he removes the improvements on the properties, all right, he would then have to conform to the current ordinances that pertain to that property. If he removes what's there, as long as he keeps what's there, he's grandfathered in, he's grandfathered in. If he removes anything, then he starts fresh with current zoning ordinances. And he would have to come back in front of his board, more than likely, because, for planning, and anything that he would change and go outside of a current ordinance, he would have to then go in front of zoning and either get a variance or a special exception to that.
Okay.
As long as, as long as he keeps it the same, he is, they are what they are. As soon as he changes something and knocks it down and starts over, he begins all over again.
Okay.
Can you put conditions on a lot consolidation? Can you condition it upon any future applications would then have to meet the current zoning regardless of the fact of the impervious being grandfathered? Can you condition it, that they will meet the impervious requirements with any new development?
Well, they would have to do that, once they come in.
Well, not, like, if it's only a change in use, not a change in, you know, structures, they wouldn't, right? Would it change the impervious? I don't think so.
No, but if they're going to put another building, or if they're going to scrape the site, then that's, they're going to have to meet what the ordinance requires them to meet.
But a retrofit wouldn't, would be grandfathered, right? If the building stayed?
Correct.
So could you condition it and say if there's a retrofit and change in use, they would have to meet the...
No.
Just a question, I'm not...
No.
Okay, I just, I didn't think it was possible, but I figured I should ask.
Wouldn't that be just, that would be changing the ordinance by doing something like that, right?
Well, a retrofit, I don't, I'm not sure what a retrofit is, I guess adding...
Well, like, if the buildings remain, you know, and you just change the use.
Oh, that's...
In that case, they would be grandfathered into the impervious coverage.
Yeah, if the use is a permitted use and the building, the footprint's not changing, then none of those other requirements would change. It's, as long as they don't touch it, expand it, they expand it, then they're under the expansion of a non-conforming use, if it's a non-conforming use.
John, if they went to three restaurants, they probably don't have enough parking, kind of a thing?
If they did that, Mr. Kachansky would do the calculation, and they would end up in front of the zoning hearing board, much like every other restaurant that comes into town ends up. They'd have to figure out a way to deal with parking, employees, patrons, et cetera.
Okay?
All right, thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? If we have no other board comment, is there a motion?
I move, so move.
I second.
What's the motion?
Just conditioned upon, there was a stipulation in the letter from the engineer, just that they, the following, that the consolidation plan needed to be signed by the engineer, and they just asked that we put that condition in.
I received that today.
Oh, so you're all set, okay, great.
Okay, one more time?
Well, I so moved that we accepted this final plan, yes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You too. Next applicant is 205 Stratford Avenue, amended plan, in for a final.
Again, Mr. Chairman, before this starts, I take about 30 seconds here. This is basically a very similar scenario. This was the previously approved land development plan that was before you quite a while ago. What they're proposing is to move one of the property lines back three feet that affects three of the lots. So because of the, it falls under, the way the code's written, it falls under doing a subdivision, once again, a minor subdivision, so they had to come before you. So it's moving the back property line, and they can explain it to you a little better. They're moving a back property line three feet. Doesn't change any of the previously approved land development, other than the size of these lots.
So this has already been totally approved by us, and then they're making this modification?
The land development has, yeah.
Yes, okay. Well, the applicant will explain it to us.
Good evening, I'm George Brosman, representing the applicant Chuck Dobson, the engineer is here, and Beau Erickson. Chuck will explain this, but just briefly, I agree with what Roger said, this was a subdivision and a land development plan that you had approved, the plan was recorded. As is often the case, as building permit plans are prepared, the actual buildings that you're going to build come forward, and during that process, there was an issue with these three lots regarding, I believe, the front porches, that made it necessary to move this one line back basically three feet. So Chuck can go into the details of that, but that's really all we're here for. Everything else is, as was approved. Chuck?
I think that's all the details, actually. There's not much more to it than that.
Okay. And Roger, just a question for you, just confirming, so the new, the result of moving the line, all the, all the four lots still conform to all our codes?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Is there any board questions first, and comments?
I do have a quick one, the Delaware County planning letter that we received in our packet.
Yeah, they scrambled the...
Thank you, they gave us the wrong letter.
Yes.
Okay. So this note about the plan never being stamped for recording was about something else?
Yes, they, that letter half refers to the old 115 Stratford Development.
The Villa Stratford?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's the second time they did it, too, so...
Okay, well, I think it has to do with the name of the, yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
There's also five waivers related to this that are outlined on Roger's letter as well, so we'll probably need a recommendation on those as well.
So the new chart on these pages reflects the new numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Roger, these are waivers we've previously granted, correct?
What these waivers are, is under the code for a subdivision plan, you need to show contour lines and all of the other ground features. Since that's already been approved on the approved land development plan that they're constructing to, I didn't want to confuse the issue and have that shown on this plan and have something not match, or whatever, that's already been approved. This has nothing to do with changing any of the ground features, it's just moving a property line. So I would recommend that those waivers be granted.
Okay, great. Is there any public comment? No public comment, do we have a motion?
Yeah, except the final plan of 205 Stratford Avenue.
With the waivers, waivers, and the waivers.
Including the waivers that are recommended, the five waivers.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Evening. Next is 131 slash 133 Garrett Avenue, in for preliminary and final this evening. Go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Dave Zep, and I'm with Joseph M. Stock, and I'm here tonight to represent the applicant, DJB Properties. Unfortunately, Mr. Brassa was unable to attend tonight. He had a conflict, so I'm on my own here, so. This was a plan that was before you previously, and we've made some revisions to it, but simply put, it's a, it's a two-lot subdivision of an existing parcel on Garrett Avenue in the Garrett Hill, Garrett Avenue Neighborhood Zoning District of Rattner Township. The lot is 11,050 square feet, and we're just dividing it in two to be able to build two twin homes on here. The plan that's, I'm sorry, moved that around. The plan that's before you was a revision of an earlier plan where the shape of the buildings have changed, and the parking layout is different from before. And we're just simply here asking for approval for the two lots to be able to construct a twin home here on Garrett. Now, we do have a few waiver requests that we have on the plan. I was going to say we're requesting relief from some drafting issues in regards to location maps, but the, one relief is, we're looking to keep Garrett Avenue the same, you know, the same size that it is. You know, the code calls for the cartway on Garrett to be 28 feet wide within a 60-foot ride of way, but the existing Garrett Avenue today is a 24-foot cartway within a 33-foot ride of way, and we're asking that, you know, we not have to widen it out. The existing street for the entire block is quite narrow in that regard. And I think an actual widening of it, you know, would be detrimental to the area. Another, you know, the second to last waiver request that we had was just simply the number of street trees that are required along the frontage of Garrett Avenue. The lot's 63 feet wide, technically by code, whatever, you need 2.1 trees, you know, it's like every 30 feet. But we chose to, like, round down rather than round up and provide a third tree. And then also, the existing streetlights, there are existing streetlights out on Garrett Avenue, and our property falls within the middle of the two existing streetlights that are there, so we were looking for relief from providing the streetlights at a spacing of 40 feet. We are proposing to provide, you know, lampposts on the properties, you know, each home would have a light out in front of it, and in that regard, we were hoping to, you know, not have to provide multiple streetlights, you know, along the, you know, the existing Garrett Avenue. There are existing streetlights there now, so. I was going to say, beyond that, I was going to say I could, you know, available answer any questions you may have regarding the project.
How far apart are the streetlights that are there?
They're about 184 feet apart.
Supposed to be 40 feet?
The code calls for your streetlights to be no more than 40 feet apart.
And they're, and they're how much now?
100, the two existing streetlights that are there are on poles that are located about 184 feet apart, with our property pretty much sandwiched right in the middle. There is an existing utility pole on the opposite side of the street, right in the middle of our lot, it just does not have a streetlight on it, to date, so.
So what's the, I mean, that's such a big difference. So what's the objection, is it financial objection to the light? I mean, it's not like it's a 0.1 tree, you know, I mean, the 0.1 tree I get.
Yeah, understood.
But this is, you know, you're, if you put yours in the middle, you're at 90 feet, and you're supposed to be, I know you can't control past 63, but you're, you should be at 40 feet, no more than 40, you're at 90. It's twice as bad as it should be, so if there's another reason, please let us know.
There is none.
Okay.
Yeah, so as far as the streetlights, it'd just be a case of, should we be held to the code, or we'd have to put two in, you know, on our frontage?
Excuse me one second, did you say there's a utility pole across the street?
Yes, there is an existing utility pole across the street.
So hypothetically, odd light could go there.
Yeah, thank you. It's, one of the easiest things that could be accomplished would be to, like, place a streetlight, you know, that's, you know, approved by the township or whatever, on the existing pole that's there.
But if you were going to try to meet the code, you'd be putting two on either end of your property, and that one across the street would also be, you would need three to even come close.
I think one of the issues is you need a utility pole, too.
180, it's supposed to be 40.
No, I know, you're the one across the street.
So if you, if you were to consider that was a light, you'd still need one on either end of his property, you wouldn't have the 40.
I think this is a really old neighborhood.
Because they would be 90 apart. What is the, what is the standard on that street? Does anyone?
I don't think there is a standard.
Kevin, do you know how far, but they are on average?
No, I don't.
So it's my understanding that you can alternate, you can get a streetlight landscape, you know, one on that side of the street, one on this side, one on the, you can, they can use the pole on the opposite side of the street. But I thought part of the whole Garrett coalition was to try to bring about, you know, these types of changes, so if we just allow the applicant to not do it, then how on earth is it?
No, I don't think we're saying that, I think, but he's only got 63 feet of frontage, so he'd only have to put one light in. He doesn't have to light the whole street.
He can space it with, in conjunction with the light on across the street.
But he only has to do one light. And then the next time somebody develops another property, they can put in a light.
I was going to say...
To get the 40-foot spacing, though, he's not going to get it with one light.
Actually, one and a half lights, if you want to go with the tree and not...
But he's not, he's not going to get the spacing with one light, though. He's going to need two to get this, even close to the spacing.
Well, actually, we let our engineer tell us. Because we're not really sure.
Well, if you have no light across the street, which is the situation, but you're supposed to alternate either side...
Can we just have them interpret it? Because I disagree with you, and, but I could be totally wrong, so. Does anybody know how many lights they have to put in? They think two, Regina thinks three, we think one. It's 63 feet of road frontage. He needs two, okay. There we go, two, not three, not one. Does that also rise to the level they have to install a utility pole? If there isn't a pole there?
It wouldn't be a utility pole, Mr. Kunde. They would actually install a streetlight, we would give them a detail. So if you, whether you count the one, whether he does a drop and puts a Cobra head on the one across the street and mounts a new pole, that would be a new streetlight, or the applicant would just put two new streetlights on their side. They'd have to tap the electric, bring it over, just like a lot of other subdivisions do.
Okay. Let's hold this, we still have public comment, so at least we're clear on what the requirement is. What's your position on the stormwater? There's a requirement that...
They've adequately addressed the stormwater.
They have, okay, great.
Can I back up a second on this, Steve?
Yeah, of course.
I'm sorry. Just for my own knowledge and edifice, you're going to have two lampposts on the end of the properties by the driveways. That's what your drawing says anyhow, I think LP means lamppost.
LP is a lamppost, yes, and there are two that are shown in the front, and they're on the, each on the, they're each on, I'm sorry for stuttering here.
That's okay.
There's one on each lot, and it's on the opposite side of the entrance sidewalk. There are no garages anymore, that was one of the changes that was made from the previous plan. There was opposition by the board or the township or whoever to the garages that were proposed in the front, and the applicant, Mr. Brassa, eliminated those, and the parking has all been removed to the, not removed, I'm sorry, has been moved to the rear. So what we were proposing to do was put a, you know, residential lamppost by the entrance sidewalk to each unit, but more than likely, we'll probably end up, instead of doing the lamppost like that, we'll put the street, the required streetlights in that you're looking for.
One more, one more question? Right below, it says speed pump, speed hump? Is that the light, is that, is that the light that's there, or the telephone pole that's there, or the utility pole that's there now? What is that?
On the opposite side of the street, yes. That's the existing utility pole that's there.
So technically, what you're asking for the waiver is to put a, to put a light on that pole? Or no pole? Or no light?
Well, the waiver request was to do no lights and have the lampposts be sufficient, but...
You know that's not working, right?
Okay, yes. Yes.
Okay.
My, the applicant, Mr. Brassa, is not here to speak for himself, so I'll do it. I would venture a guess that if he's required to put in two streetlights, what will, what he'll probably do is put in the streetlights that are required by the township and eliminate the two residential lampposts.
Residential lampposts are controlled by the homeowner?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, well. I want questions now, and then public comment, and then air comments.
So in the notes from the engineer, and maybe it was Amy's letter, there were a couple of comments, there's some comment about the herringbone issue of the sidewalk and the curb cuts. Is there some issue with addition, with some curbing? Those are two questions. Also, did this go back to Delaware County Planning Commission since the garages were removed? Because it was reviewed by Delaware County back when it had garages in the front, and I'm just wondering if it's gone back to them since the plans changed. And the other, the only other two questions I have about the plan is that it's still, the plan is still showing that there's a portion of the driveway that is crushed stone, and I'm wondering if that's intentional? Does that count toward the impervious? Does it not count toward the impervious?
That's, that's existing, is what the crushed stone is, is existing.
Okay, but it's showing on the front page, which is the newly proposed plan as crushed stone.
It's still shown as existing, that's going to be paved, correct, sir? That driveway will be paved.
They're showing some sections as blacktop and others as crushed stone, which leads me to believe they're intending to leave it partially crushed stone, I'm just trying to figure that out.
No, there's, there's additional paving that's proposed that will be over an area of the existing crushed stone, but there's also an area of crushed stone that's not under the paving, that will be removed.
It will be, the crushed stone will be removed.
Removed and turned to green lawn.
Okay, and then the final question I have is, Roger, is there an issue with the fact that the parking spots in the back seem to be two feet into the rear yard setback? There's no issue with that? Okay. So, other than my Delaware County question and my herringbone?
And the, it has not gone back to Delaware County, it's not required to go back to Delaware County unless it's a new submission.
Okay, thank you, and...
And what's, what's your specific question about the herringbone?
So there was just some back and forth in the reading about whether or not, in the notes about herringbone heaves, should they do it, should they not do it, but you guys want them to do the herringbone because that's the Garrett Avenue, right?
That was, I believe that was in Ray Daly's memo?
Perhaps, it was Ray, yes, Ray.
Yes.
But you still want them to conform to it? But you still want them to conform to it?
It's a code requirement.
And the, I'm going to have to re-read the spot I read something about with the curb, so I'll come back to that in a minute because I can't remember. I jotted a cryptic note, now I can't remember what it was.
We have a comment that just asked them to eliminate the curb ramps and detectable warning surfaces. That was, Ray had asked us to eliminate that.
The curb, say that again, the curb what?
The curb ramps for the driveways.
You want them to remove them?
Correct, and the detectable warning surfaces.
Thank you. And the applicant's going to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we would, whatever your staff would recommend in those letters and everything with our, you know, plans that would come back before you, we would make those changes.
Since it's your intention to comply with all of staff's recommendations, and with the exception of the waivers requested, one waiver, streetlights, we are, we've eliminated, well, pending approval of your client, obviously.
Yes.
So really what we're talking about is the remaining, one, two, three, three waivers, two, three waivers, four waivers.
We've eliminated one.
Yeah, there's.
Just the waivers outstanding.
There's four remaining, whatever. Two drafting issues, the width of the street, you know, Garrett, and then the street trees.
Right.
You know, it's like.
Does staff have any more questions before we ask for public comment? I mean, does the board?
Is there any issue with the waiver for the right-of-way that we need to be aware of? We're good with, that's consistent with the township?
I don't have an issue with that. It's consistent with, it's an existing street. It's consistent with the existing street, so.
I can say my comment on that issue of the street itself, echoing the sentiments existing, and most of the existing homes along the street are so close that it would be prohibitive to widen it out to what the township's code requires.
Can we have a public comment? Anyone? Thanks.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. As to the streetlights, all the street, all the poles and all the lights are on the west side of the street. There is not enough lighting. There are two lights between the bridge and Conestoga and two lights between the bridge and Lancaster Avenue. But we've never talked about alternating now. Several years ago, when John Ruddy was the superintendent, he submitted a grant for Garrett Avenue because it was considered transit-oriented development for a million dollars because the sidewalks on the west side with the telephone poles are only 18 inches wide. And to be handicapped accessible, they need to be 36 inches. I don't know what it would be like to put telephone poles alternating on the other side of the street. The other issue I have is why is the builder not required to map out all the houses within 500 feet? We are a very dense neighborhood and one of the purposes of the whole Garrett Hill Coalition, Garrett Hill District, was to make sure that any new development, any redevelopment, that it was within the character, maintaining the character of the neighborhood. So I think they should have to do it. I know it's a drafting issue, but why not? We make other people do it, so.
Okay, thanks. Any additional public comment?
I'm Patty Barker, Chair of the Garrett Hill Coalition. I just wanted to say that Dave Brasso has met with the community, has met with the coalition throughout this process. We've been in communication with him. And when he first came before the board back last May, the community was very concerned about what he was going to build there. As you know, we labored for two and a half years to write these Garrett Hill zoning district ordinances and they were vetted by hundreds of people. So front-facing garages were not allowed and somehow that got past the township. Anyway, I just want to say that the coalition supports Dave's development. Unlike many developers, he actively sought and was receptive to the community's inputs, input and concerns. So I think, and also based on what Sarah was saying, in looking at his plans, the revised plans, they do seem to fit with the character in the current neighborhood. I agree with the cartway thing, you know, we're not going to widen it now. The streetlights, all of these things are moving forward. So the addition of light, I support what Sarah's saying and I thank you for, we need more light on Garrett. It's, the streetlights are too far apart. So I just want to say I think the waivers that they're asking for are relatively minor. I appreciate the addition of the streetlights. I think that'll be helpful. But the Garrett Hill Coalition supports this development. We're looking forward to having two attractive homes on a lot that has been empty for many, many years. And I think it will fit within the character of our current community. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
I have a question.
Yeah.
The staff, what are the height of the poles that are required in this area, the light poles? And are they kind of villagey-looking type light poles? What are the standards?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
The one thing I would add is if you're stuck in the quandary of the redevelopment. So if you don't put the two streetlights now.
I'm not arguing that point.
And the street continues to redevelop, you lose it. We have a standard detail, I think they're 14 feet? I'll have to try to pull that up.
Does anybody from the coalition know if you specified a style or a height? Okay. Well, that's why I was wondering, you'd want something more.
These would not be, these would be streetlights, not on a, they would not be on a utility pole.
Right.
No, they just, the township just put a new light on our street because someone knocked it down and they came and put one in. And it's a colonial-looking light.
Right.
And it's not vapor, it's not that yellow, it's white.
Mercury?
It's really a nice light.
Right.
I was really surprised how nice it is.
So the ones on the one side of the street are, as Regina said, they're the cobra heads, they're the ones that get attached to a pole and there's an electric drop to them. This is a direct-bury streetlight that is more ornamental in nature and we can, I'm still trying to pull up the actual detail, but it is not what you see across the street.
Okay, yeah, I would suggest.
Like I said, the one on our street is very nice. I was really pleasantly surprised how nice it is.
Yeah, and it would be an addition, it would be a nice addition for people who are walking in the dust.
And it's very bright. It's a lot brighter than the older ones that are there and it's a white light. It's not that yellow or orangey light. And it's very colonial-looking. And I think it is about 14 feet high.
Well, that was just my suggestion, go with something that's more in character, that would relate to the neighborhood as opposed to an industrial cobra head type light.
Yeah, it sounds to me, well, I'm agreeing, whatever. The township probably has a standard that they want in the neighborhood and then obviously that's what we would put in as a, you know, and put two on our side as opposed to like just adding a cobra head style on the existing pole across the street.
Any other board questions before we move to comment? Oh, come on.
It just occurs to me, the lights on the telephone poles are within the sidewalk, which reduces the width of the sidewalk to about 18 inches. Will these go on the properties or are they going to be embedded in the sidewalks, therefore narrowing down the sidewalks in those places? Which for strollers, bikes, whatever, it's quite a dance you have to do on the western side to get around these telephone poles because there's some, it makes the street, makes the sidewalk about that wide, which isn't adequate. So it's just a question I have.
We would require the applicant to put them outside the sidewalk yet in the right-of-way.
Thank you, Steve. Any other board questions before we move to board comment? Any comments?
So just kind of on the principle of, I think it's probably already in a computer, I'm not inclined to grant the waivers for the 500-foot, the first two waivers, for two reasons. One, I think a lot of times these are already in a computer and they take an aerial snapshot and I don't think it's terribly onerous to do it, but also I just don't like setting the precedent. I don't think there's any particularly compelling reason why they can't comply with the ordinance of requirements of providing that information. And then with regard to this, and I appreciate that the applicant worked, you know, was really proactive in reaching out to the neighbors. I definitely support the street one. I thought occurred to me as I was listening to the waiver about the trees, perhaps in lieu of a tree, a street tree, because it would be difficult to put in a .1 tree, unless staff has a compelling desire to have an additional tree in that area, you know, perhaps the applicant could contribute toward the tree fund and a tree could go somewhere else in the township. Or somewhere else in Garrett Hill. I know that they're getting ready to do all that work down at Clem McCrone and perhaps the applicant in consideration for that particular waiver could put a tree down at Clem McCrone where they're trying to do some work or contribute toward a tree. Other than that, I, you know, it's not, I think these are going to, I think we're going to look at these and say, wow, those are really big in Garrett Hill. I do believe that. Each of these units is double kind of the typical size of a house on Garrett Avenue. They're within his rights, he can do them. I really hope the design of them tries to, and I know that a lot of the ordinances in the Garrett Hill overlay were about protecting the character and the appearance in the neighborhood. I do think we are going to look at these and say, wow, they're kind of big. But it's his right and it's, I get that and I appreciate that he's been working really actively with the neighbors and I have no doubt that the coalition will keep an eye on that, as I see them nodding.
Question, can they do that overlay thing without coming back in front of us? Or would they have to come back? If we didn't grant the waiver, one and two?
For the 500 feet?
Yes.
If they would choose to comply, they wouldn't have to come back.
Okay.
Roger, just take me through this again. I think I know the answer, but I'm not quite sure. This 500 foot, why is the whole world constantly asking to waive this thing? Is this because this is a small development or what? Why did you decide to ask for a waiver? We're kind of getting tired of this question and it's always bogging us down. As a group, we spend way too much time and honestly, unless, I would just like to say, like, there's never going to be a waiver granted for the 500-foot thing and so we can stop talking about it.
My answer to that and my reasoning for it is, we're looking at a property here that's less than 10,000 square feet when you talk about the net and it's 63 feet wide by 173 feet deep. The exist, the reason for wanting to see, and I will defer to staff if they have a valid issue on why you would see it, but in wanting to see existing properties, existing facilities out to a distance of 500 feet is onerous on a subject this size. If there was a property that was coming before you that was 50 acres and you would want to see how it would impact the surrounding area, it's very valid. Where are the utilities? How many of them are going to be impacted by what's going on? Stormwater management, all of that. In a situation like this where this property is, and I'm going to say, very small, whatever, all of the existing utilities are in Garrett Avenue, right? The stormwater management is contained on the site itself. It's exiting to the rear, which is going into the one large parcel that adjoins the property. And then it's just simply a case of, all right, you're asking a developer here now, whatever, to go down 500 feet down the street and show every existing utility, every existing storm sewer, all the curbs, all the houses, all the driveways, everybody's fence, whatever, and the question would be put forth to you then, for what reason, for what purpose? This particular project or any project of this size is having such minimal impact, I'm repeating myself again, but like the existing utilities are there in Garrett Avenue. We're tying into them. This particular project also, once again, is not tying into any existing storm sewer where staff would have to evaluate, okay, if they tie into this inlet on Garrett Avenue, where's that water going 500 feet down the street? You know, is there a problem? It's not a situation like that in this particular project. That led to the request for a waiver to not have to, you know, expend the time and effort or whatever to show everything out to that perimeter of 500 feet, whether it be the adjoining properties, whether it be the existing features and, you know, such matters such as that. That was the reason for the waiver.
Okay, thanks. Rod, is that logical in your mind?
That pretty much covers it, yeah.
Okay, so you're okay with the waiver?
In this case, I wouldn't object, but aren't we just talking about a photograph like this?
No, 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 you have to go where, you have to survey.
Yeah, but what most people do is give us something like this.
That's it.
Yeah.
Now, that, a photographic image does not satisfy the requirement. In the past, people have provided photographic images like you're indicating there and have also received the waiver from putting all of the utilities and everything on that photographic image.
So this type of thing is really not acceptable either.
If it doesn't show all of the utilities and doesn't have the detail, no, but.
I'm very familiar with what you have in your hand there, ma'am, and that is something that would be beneficial to give the board and the staff scope of the community, but.
I'm not arguing with you. Yeah, I didn't realize it needed to show the sewer and everything else.
The properties along Garrett Avenue are really no much wider than ours. And if we're going out 500 feet on the other side, you know, I could, the developer would have to like, you know, we'd be in a situation where we might be putting 200 property owners on there.
Okay, thank you.
And it's not the case that you can just get that information. You would have to survey that. I mean, it's not just readily available.
That's true, that is true.
So that's a burdensome cost.
Okay, good, thank you. That was very helpful. Thank you. Do we have any other board comment? Do we have, anyone want to take a stab at a motion? All right. I'll make one if nobody else does. But I recommend that we approve the application subject to, let's see, subject to the, well, I guess we.
Do you want to say with the exception of the last waiver?
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, waiver one, two, three and four, did he require, except for the fifth?
No, we're going to grant those.
Yes.
We're granting those waivers, but not five, which was the streetlights.
Light, right.
The streetlights, right, we're not granting the streetlight waiver. And I believe everything else has been taken care of. Well, plus the, also the applicant will conform with staff's recommendation on the transportation comments.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next is the library expansion. It's preliminary and final. Before we get started, I would like to make some comments. I would like to have a brief board discussion about how we're approaching this application. I think we're all, I can speak for myself and I think I can speak for most board members that we're kind of not real happy with the process here and how this has come about and how it's a rush job and how there are a lot of significant issues with the application that we need to deal with. However, there is a significant grant on the line here and time is of the essence. And I think that there's going to be a kind of a trade-off between expediency and trying to secure the grant and some of these waivers and some of these other items. And I feel that that, we are a recommending body and the Board of Commissioners, as the finals say. So I think it's, I think it's our obligation in light of everything going on here to come up with a recommendation this evening. And it doesn't, I don't know that it matters as much as we, I guess the applicant would like us to recommend we approve, but more importantly to the specific. to the specific recommendation will be our comments and our concerns, but I think it needs to get out of our hands tonight. So unless anybody, well, if anybody on the board has any strong objections to that, I'd like to proceed down that path and I'll take your comments now. Okay?
No, I didn't, I thought you meant in general, but you, you're...
Just as this, as it relates to our procedure, how we're gonna approach this evening. Okay. Alright, please proceed.
Alright, well, thank you for having us. My name is Sherri Kimmel, I'm with Kimmel Bogret Architects. We felt that the last time we were here, we were remiss in giving you the overall view of the project. Since we had been before the board a couple of times, we thought that, you know, you were aware and it was more of a technical presentation, so I thought I'd take a few minutes just to go through how we got to this point. We did start working with the library board. I'm not sure if we can get that on the screen a little better. Anyway, we worked with the board, the staff, township residents to come up with the mission and core values for the project. One of the things that the, you know, the library has been there for many years and is a big part of the community and one of the things that the library's mission and vision is to be a destination for all of the people in the, in the community and we came up with some core values to become a beacon to, right now, the building itself is kind of background, it's kind of set off the street. The entrance to it is not on West Wayne Avenue, it's actually facing the parking lot. The library's request was to become more collaborative so that more people could come in to use the library in a collaborative way, not to increase their patronage, but to have more space for the patrons that currently use it, to be able to study, teens to hang out, parents to bring their children, and these are some of the reasons for the need for the addition. And also, we wanted the library to become more of a home away from home and be, feel more welcoming to the community as a whole, so that is part of the reason for bringing it closer to the West Wayne Avenue. And so, the lot, I'm sure you're all familiar with, it, South Wayne is down here, you have the South Wayne lot, West Wayne going up through this, it's a very long and narrow lot, has very little parking, there's really no place to expand the library of the size and because of the way the grading works in the, in this area, this portion is on grade and the grade travels down so that you actually have a half a story out by the time you get to the rear portion of the building. So as you can see, it's, it's sort of a landlocked space and we were challenged with figuring out a way to add to a building like this. So our initial design concept, this is the existing plan, again, as I pointed out, there's a very nice front porch, that's part of the library, had, part of the library's ability to reach out to the public, have this outdoor seating space, but it all, all the entrance and everything really fronts the parking lot and doesn't really front the street. The vestibule coming into the library puts you right into the center of a very long, narrow space which allows for lots of noise, there's not very many areas to zone for like the teens to go, the children to go, things like that, and the administrative staff is sort of landlocked at the, at the back where they have very little visibility. So our initial concept was to push the terrace towards the front. Now we create a really nice welcoming entrance to the front of West Wayne Avenue. The entrance is, is very walkable from the middle of Wayne, it's walkable from the neighborhoods. You have a core area where the staff can actually see and we create these zones of visibility for the patrons to use. You have children's area, you have teen areas, you have adult collection back in here, we've created new quiet spaces for tutoring and gathering for all sorts of, the community to come in and use these spaces and use the library in a more welcoming way. You can see as, in this scenario, we also, given the fact that the only place to go is over the parking lot, we are raising the addition, but we still need it to be connected to the space itself because of the visibility. We've pushed the administrative area towards the back so that now the whole library functions as a, as one.
Just interrupt for one second. It looks like there's two little sets of stairs. How much higher is the adult collection over the parking lot than the main floor?
So it's about 24 inches above the main floor at this stage. We have regraded the parking lot, so we are allowing a nine-foot clear underneath this addition now. And again, that is because of the existing roof lines and the way the, the building connects, this is your, this is our attempt to really make it on one level. You know, libraries function best when they're all on one level and they're very visible. As we raise the library addition up, that visibility decreases and then also the accessibility, access to that becomes much longer, you know, to raise it up another 24 inches would require an additional 24-inch, 24-foot ramp, so we would, you know, be taking up a lot of sort of prime real estate within the library itself to be able to get access to that space. I just wanted to, as we developed the plan further, we, we identified the need to keep some heritage trees out on West Wayne Avenue and that created this new, much more inviting terrace option. And then we also, you know, as, as I said, we raised the addition over the parking lot area to allow for that nine-foot underpass and created the, the long ramp and the couple of four risers that we would need. We've also, in this plan, added, the red line is the existing line of the building, so we've added space to put in an elevator. This was a question that we had last month for handicap accessibility to both the upper and lower levels, so now the patrons of the library can get down below without having to go outside the building and walk down the middle of the parking lot. The grant that you alluded to that we've, are under a tight time constraint gave us the opportunity to reconfigure all of the toilet, partition, toilet areas to provide family toilets and all handicap accessibility and that, it also pays for the elevator and it also pays for the upgrade to the HVAC system to make it more energy efficient. The lower level, I'll go through this very quickly. This was the existing lower vestibule area where patrons would, if the door is not an accessible entrance from the upper level, so they would actually go outside and down the sidewalk into this area, has the main meeting room, has an area where the friends of the library do book sorting. We've re-renovated this area to allow for a different, a new vestibule, the elevator, but the conference room, so now people can come straight into here and have a lot of meeting area and then also having a secondary access for the friends' sorting space. Again, as this plan developed and we realized that we could regrade this and bring a much nicer drop-in through here, we actually could create a on-grade access down at this level so that now there's no ramping necessary, so in the plan that Andy will show you later with the handicap accessibility down there, there's no ramping, there's a straight in.
Another, another quick question. You said you're regrading the parking lot?
Yes.
So you're cutting it?
Yes, in order for us to achieve the nine-foot overhang, we have to actually regrade the whole parking lot, so we are pulling out several feet of grade to, to create that area.
Two feet, three feet?
At the average.
We're dropping the lower existing inlet about 11 inches, so we'll take 11 inches.
I'm sorry.
My name's Andy Corzon, I'm the project landscape architect. We're dropping the existing stormwater inlet 11 inches, which obviously down at that end of the parking lot will result in about 11 inches of cut from, from the current. I think in some areas, we're taking about two to three feet of cut from the parking lot. That, the largest area of cut is where we need to get under the overhang with the maximum of kind of possible clearance.
So, we have the technical drawings here, if you, if you'll bear with me just to go through the rest of the presentation. This was the existing site plan. I wanted to quickly show you the new improved site plan. If we go back to this, this is existing parking, it's kind of, it's, it's kind of dangerous as it is because there's, there's parallel parking along here and pull head-in parking this, in this area. We've actually increased the angle on this area so that there's, the width of the driveline is wider than it currently exists and that allows for the parallel parking and the angled parking. This is the overhang space, this is that entrance into where the elevator is and this again is the entrance into the new upper level. Handicap parking here and here, handicap access to those, both of those areas. Just to go over the exterior renderings, this is the existing frontage of West Wayne Avenue of the library as it exists. This is our new proposed frontage for West Wayne Library, so you can see it really now fronts the, fronts West Wayne, it really is inviting to the neighborhood. The, the trees we, I was discussing, there's three of them here, two heritage trees and then in this rendering, we redid, this was an early version, but we redid this whole terrace area to be able to, to save that one major tree in the corner here. This is where the overhang then, and the parking underneath starts. I'll show you from this angle, this is coming up West Wayne from the post office. Again, that is the area that we're talking about that has the nine-foot clearance and the inviting corner entrance if you're coming in from downtown Wayne. Just a little bit closer, just to show you the entry again, and then this is from the South Wayne lot in the rear where we had that overhang space and then this is the enclosed parking area. Okay? So that was just a brief overview of what, why, how we got to this point. So, oh, I did want to, I'm sorry, I did want to say that we are also, as part of this major renovation, fully sprinkling the building. So, fully sprinklering the building, which is no, which does not currently have sprinkler systems, so we're creating a much safer environment throughout.
Again, my name's Andy Corzon, I'm the project landscape architect on the project.
Do you have these on the...
Oh, you do, okay. I guess, the most notable thing on the cover sheet here is, is we've listed some of the existing non-conformities that, that we will be continuing on the project. Two are tied to the side yard setback on the western side of the property. There's, because we abut a residential, residentially zoned district, we need to put a side yard, we need a side yard setback and we also need a landscape buffer of about 10 feet and we do not have the available space that's created by the existing proposed building footprint to accommodate that, so we will be developing that buffer to the maximum that we can, but we can't put a full 10-foot buffer in. The other component of the, of the cover sheet here is the requested waivers. We are requesting waivers for the preliminary plan submission, the transportation impact study. There's two curbs that do not meet the minimum radius under the overhang and, did I miss one? And the parking facility dimensions do not, for the angled parking, do not meet the standards prescribed in the subdivision and land development ordinances. We also are requesting four waivers for the stormwater and since submitting these plans, we've determined that the groundwater recharge is not possible by function of the fact that we have no infiltration on the site. We have, we had testing completed last week that indicated a infiltration rate of zero inches per hour and a limiting zone at each of the four borehole sites within one and a half feet from the surface down to about six and a half feet. This report will be sent to Roger to kind of confirm those findings. The peak rate and stream erosion, we've also determined that the proposed stormwater plans should address the peak rate and the stream bank erosion requirements as are prescribed in the ordinance. We think we can manage to meet those requirements without altering the proposed stormwater plans. There's an existing 12-inch pipe that leaves the site that essentially whacked as an orifice and, and hold back some of the water, allowing us to meet that. So, all in all, we're really at this point looking to receive a waiver for, for the groundwater recharge on, on the grounds that we can't recharge any groundwater and for the water The proposed plan as, we're maintaining circulation through the site. Right now, it's a one-way entrance off of West Wayne and we are maintaining the entrance at its original location, 15 feet wide. There will be a new crosswalk installed and the accessible parking will be made compliant with current ADA standards. It's a one-way drive through the entire lot until the South Wayne lot where we also, we will include a secondary accessible parking location for entrance to the lower level of the library. The curb that is not compliant with the standards is central on the plan, under the overhang, located right here. I can...
Heck, if we didn't see that.
This, right here.
Thank you.
It was on the PowerPoint, I apologize. Due space requirements, this has been kind of a back-and-forth battle in trying to do as much as we can on the site and still maximize or maintain existing parking. To maintain five spaces under the overhang, I had to shrink that island to the smallest possible width, which is about two feet on either side of the structural column and because of the width, I wasn't able to get a five-foot radius on the island. I think it's about two-foot radius on both sides. To achieve this, I would have, the, the island would have to be about 10 and a half feet wide, which would result in the loss of a parking spot. We also have 70-degree parking, which is not a standard parking angle, and again, this came down to simply trying to maintain or get as close to maintaining the existing number of parking spaces on site. 90-degree parking, as Sherri mentioned, was problematic in that it was difficult to back out of the 90-degree spots and occasionally there was conflict with cars parked in the parallel parking, so we began rotating the spaces to fit with the structural support columns of the overhead expansion and get them as close to compliant as we could and we determined that 45 and 60-degree parking wasn't going to work without losing an additional one to two spaces and we're already losing one as part of this plan. So, the waiver to alter the, the parking dimensions comes from the fact that we'd like to maintain as much parking as possible on the site.
Can I just interject? We did, as the architects, architectural plan, reduce the column, columns, the first plan we showed you last month had three columns in that space. There was concern about people maybe hitting them, so we've increased the steel depth and, and narrowed it down to one column, so, and then worked with Amy and Roger to determine the, the size of that island that would protect that column that's in the middle there.
I just want to jump in again.
Yeah, go ahead.
Those parallel spots are new, they were not, they're not existing spots?
The, there are parallel spots on, on the site.
Okay.
I believe...
Not as many, maybe.
No, no, the, I would say the first two to three spaces are new, are new spaces that, the remainder are existing. They'll be relined just as part of repaving and renovating the parking lot, but...
And I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but the overhang, is it the same height at the front and the back, for lack of a better set of terms?
No, actually, because of the way the grading works, it's nine feet at the front, but by the time you get under the, the addition, it's 10 feet at the back.
Okay.
I have a question if I might jump in at this point on the overhang. We had a gentleman here last month that had a power wheelchair and a van that handled that.
Yes.
Do you happen to recall what the height of that van was and would it make it underneath this?
His van was eight feet.
So it would...
And so at that time, we had it at 8'4", but then we did go back with, and when we did this, the column realignment, we raised it up.
So he would be good then?
He would be great.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Here's the, the grading plan. I believe the question came up about cut. We will need to cut from the entrance, we'll enter the site at about 2% and then drop at about 4%, which is compliant with the maximum slope for a parking lot and then upon hitting the overhang, the parking lot will level out to about 2%. And then upon hitting the overhang, the parking lot will level out to about 2% until it has to exit again. And it'll be a little steep coming out, but it'll still remain in compliance with, with the subdivision and land development ordinances, which I think requires a maximum of 5% on a parking lot this size. The existing inlet that I've...
Excuse me, one more question I have.
Yeah.
So for the handicapped access at the rear, where the elevator is, what will be the grade there? In other words, will, will the, you know, person getting out of a handicap van or whatever have a problem?
No, those grades will not exceed 2%.
Okay.
So the 5% is at the exit of the overhang or 4%?
4%, yeah, I should clarify, too. This accessible parking location will be graded in such a way that it's 2% cross-slope and running slope. And then the, where'd the mouse go? And then the aisle and the standard parking stalls will all be a grade of 4%. We've included existing inlets here, and at the request of Amy, we have since added a secondary inlet here to avoid any concentration of stormwater flow across the accessible route, the lower accessible route. And as I said, that stormwater system should be able to address the peak rate requirements of District A, as well as the stream bank erosion requirements.
Are you proposing a larger pipe for storage? How are you meeting that requirement?
It's an, the pipe we're proposing is an 18-inch pipe. The outfall pipe at the existing inlet, which, the inlet itself will be lowered, the ring will be, will eliminate the existing grate and drop the ring, but the structure itself, the box itself, will remain in place. And the 12-inch outfall will serve as an orifice and actually, so the water coming in will, it'll come in faster than it can leave, which, which helps us achieve our peak rate reduction for this site. And again, those calculations will be going to Roger.
And the, the pipe is what's providing the storage? Where is the water being stored?
It, within the existing pipes.
In, in the 18-inch pipe?
I'm sorry, within the proposed pipes. I apologize.
And it's 18-inch, you said?
It's an 18-inch pipe, yes.
Is it more storage or more slowing the flow?
Slowing the flow.
It's not really about storage?
Right, right. It's really, it's achieving the peak rate reduction.
If you don't have enough storage within that pipe, then it's in the parking lot. That's why I'm asking if the pipe stores the water in the meantime.
Yeah, the, the pipe will store, store enough water to prevent any kind of overflow from happening, up to 100-year. I'm happy to keep going.
Yeah, we're, keep on going.
Okay.
Only stop for a question.
Okay. We have, I'll go here. We, as Sherry mentioned, we had reconfigured the front entrance to the library to avoid a large 36-inch pin oak, which resulted in a little bit more of a curvilinear design here that I think we felt like that really complemented things out front more. In addition, the squared-off stairs, we've added a large planter here that will have sort of a retaining wall around it, which that will be in compliance with the six-foot minimum height requirement for this zoning district. Per the discussion at the last meeting, I think the bike rack location was called into question, and we moved the bike racks up front center to make sure that anybody riding their bike to the library could park it and lock it up right in the front entrance here, and they're located right here. And adjacent to that is just, is more landscaping to kind of complement the beautiful new building.
Are you constructing any of those walls over the roots of that big tree?
The terrace will be constructed, you know, pretty close to the tree. Again, I think we're kind of staying about as far away as we can, and it was, it was a measure of balancing, you know, disturbance with having to remove the thing.
Trying to maintain it.
Yeah.
And see what happens.
Right.
Basically.
Right. And in the case of this tree right down here, it just wasn't going to be possible to work around it, so...
Obviously.
I have two questions. One has to do with the letter from, oh, Gilmore. It's, so on page two, number four of Amy's letter, it said, due to the, it's talking about the eight-foot, four-inch clearance for the overhang, but that's since been changed to nine feet.
Right.
We'll call it nine. But number four, it says, due to the onsite clearance restrictions, we recommend eliminating the parking meters. Amy, if the clearance is nine feet, do you still have concerns about the delivery trucks that you mentioned in number three? And you talked about the, the delivery trucks won't get under the underhang if it's at 8'4". At nine feet, will the fire trucks and all, not fire trucks, the UPS trucks and all that be able to get in there? And do you still want to eliminate the parking spots on, on West Wayne Avenue?
I believe the last plan had a template for the heights.
Yeah, it's at nine, they're saying it's nine feet now.
The FedEx trucks are 10'7", so they would not be able to come on site.
So you still have that concern?
I still have that concern, and it's just a suggestion. It's not something that needs to be done.
No, I knew that. I just didn't know if the height of the clearance changed that for you, but if FedEx trucks are 10'7". And the only other question I had to do is with Ray Daley's letter, which follows Amy's letter. You know, and I get it, he has the concern with the portico. You can't drive straight through to give fire service, but you, you know, do we, do we have a fire hydrant nearby? If there's a fire hydrant on West Wayne, can't the trucks come down West Wayne and, you know, attend to the building should the need arise? Or come through the South Wayne, the South Wayne parking lot? And he's talking about having to drag hoses from the firehouse. I'm like, can we put a fire hydrant?
I actually had a meeting with him. I'm going back to the aerial.
Okay.
Which is the reason I took over again.
Well, have his concerns been addressed? I mean, have you worked through that?
Well, no, because we can't, again, a fire truck would need a 14-foot clearance. But as I met with Ray, they actually can't get the fire truck to turn into this parking lot as it stands now. So they would, there's no turning radiance that would allow the fire truck itself, the big, the big ladder truck to get in. Pumper trucks do...
So it can't come in now?
Now, anyway.
It can't come in now.
Okay.
Anyway, so, so the, the fire, the firehouse is here, and what they did say they would do is, is right now, if there was a fire at the library, they would bring the truck up West Wayne and, and throw water at it from this side. And, and, you know, his request was that maybe we could get the pumper trucks under. That would require us to raise the overhang to 11 feet, which would then, again, give us 24 more inches of either ramp and risers, which would make the addition really offset. It would be almost a second story from the addition, so...
Okay, but the addition's not making his ability to access this parking lot and this property worse, because it's already an issue.
Right. It's already an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
So he could bring the fire truck into, as you pointed out, into the South Wayne and throw water at it this way. The pumper trucks could come up to the overhang and up to the overhang from both sides. You know, if in a real emergency, the one-way lane, I don't think would, goes away, right? I would hope so. And again, I wanted to point out that that is the case also for the ambulance, because we do have then access from the front air, we're not, the overhang doesn't eliminate any access to any of the doorways. You have the ADA accessible access at the end, or at the lower end, and also the front end that the ambulances can get to it from both sides. Okay?
Continue.
And I, the last piece of this obviously falls on kind of the overall look of the property, once the building is renovated and expanded. And we've, we've proposed a large amount of landscaping for a couple of reasons. One, we felt that, you know, softening the edges of the building would provide a nice contrast to the, to the new renovated building. But we also done it in a way that we think really reduces the burden of maintenance on the township. We've gone through a lot of effort to try to reduce turf grass to the greatest extent possible. A lot of times, with the one sole exception being back here, I think per the library's request, they did want to see some turf area. But generally, because it's the tree cover that's present, especially out front, the shade can be problematic for maintaining turf cover. And when you don't have turf, you have bare soil, which becomes a sedimentation source during storm events. So we'd be looking to utilize native herbaceous plants, perennials, shrubs, trees where we can. We do meet the requirements of the shade tree ordinance, but I, you know, we just meet it. I didn't want to put trees wherever they would fit, because then you've got a long-term maintenance issue with the tree. So we, we were trying to be mindful of, of plant location, and I think overall, it kind of results in a nice finishing piece for the whole project. So that's all I have. If there are any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
Yeah, if we can just roll into the board question phase?
Good.
I'm just full of questions on this one, I guess. I drive past here probably 10 to 15 times a week, for one reason or another. The bookmobile, how tall is the bookmobile? There's some kind of a truck that drops off or picks up books. Because they, if they are too tall to go through the nine-foot, they're going to be backing out onto West Wayne.
Annie Lutley, I'm the library director. The, the delivery van is similar to what a FedEx truck would be. And I believe what we had sort of talked about as the procedure is that they would come in the, the back end, sorry, you know, down where, oh, I wanted to...
So again, they could...
Come down the lower, come through the South Wayne lot and, and come up the elevator. So they would come in, there we go.
Park here and then be able to, to pull in the, the books and up the elevator, because that's where the delivery of the books are, are going upstairs anyway, in that, in the plan, or right outside of that administrative area.
And since we mentioned the UPS trucks, do you get weekly deliveries?
We do get fairly regular deliveries, yes. So I think, again, the recommendation was potentially putting the loading zone out on the, out on West Wayne, and then they could come up the ramp and ride inside.
Excuse me. Could I, could I get an understanding of the timeline on the project?
I'll defer to Sherry on that one.
Yeah, I think, when did this process start? I feel I'm new to this, so...
Oh, that's all right.
If it has been to this, the planning commission before?
It was at the planning commission last month.
Yep, that was my first meeting.
For the preliminary final review.
First time we've seen it as well.
Right.
Oh, okay. That's first time.
First time last month, so we had a lot of questions at that, at that time. And so the timeline for the, we've been working with the library for almost five years now, and they finally have gotten the fundraising and all the grants in line. And so as we go forward...
Did you say five years?
Yes, as far as the master planning. And then they went into a fundraising mode to try to raise the money to be able to do this project. So this did go before the Board of Commissioners several times in the last several years. The board has approved funding for it through a bond issue. And then we also got a Keystone grant, and that, that Keystone grant has to be used in full at the end of October. We did request an extension, which was very, you know, they were not very happy about giving us the extension, but if everything goes on track, we will start construction on this project. We want to put it out to bid in the middle of April. Construction should start in the middle of June, and it should be completed in June the next, of next year. And the, the funding for the grant, the extension to that will cover that for that length of time. But getting another extension is probably going to be more difficult.
So all your documents are done?
They are. Yeah. I mean, we have been going back and forth, but we've been really, yeah. We were...
So why are you here?
It is part of the process that we have to go through the township, and, you know, as far as the planning commission, just, we were hoping for last month, but then...
I understand that part, but if all your documentation is already done...
Well, if there's something that you want us to do, I mean, we will go back and, and relook at them, but we're, we're moving forward as quickly as we can to try to maintain that timeline. So the whole project itself has been very compacted. It's not like we've been working on the construction documents for five years. We've only been working on those for the last four months or so, so we've been really in a time crunch for all, all sides.
So...
Can I just, can you go back to your floor plan?
Oh, sure.
Because I just think it helps give you an understanding of the whole picture when you see this floor plan. You had a colored floor plan.
I did. I, it's just slightly different from, from the newer, newer one. Again, this is the new terrace, you know, except for the curved area. Entrance comes in, we have a new circulation, very inviting area for patrons to come in, lots of space for them to check out books. The children's story area now becomes a nice corner glass beacon area, and then there's still the family playtime space that is more contained and also more visible from the staff, for the staff core. And then we did enclose the back, existing back terrace, which then becomes a teen center. So now they are also very visible to staff, but also very contained as far as sound and things like that, and it's a great place for them to hang out. There's a lot of teens that come in after school to work on homework and do all sorts of things. And also, to the homework aspect, we added quiet rooms that can be opened to bigger rooms so that tutors can use them and also the community come in and, and use them for meetings, for planning purposes. And then lots of extra space for just collaboration and hanging out, and computer space is more access to, to the Wi-Fi and more, and laptops. And I don't believe I mentioned this before, but there's also a cafe added to this. So it's really, now it becomes a destination, home away from home kind of idea for the library.
What's an OPAC?
That's the online stations that you, card catalog type of stations. They're computers just to look up, yeah. Yeah, but they're computers now instead of the...
No, I...
No, I didn't mean that. I just meant, that's why it's like an OPAC instead of the card catalog called, you know...
I hate to ask this question so late, and as an architect, I'm very sympathetic to the challenge of this site. Did you explore other configurations that didn't require this bump out and...
We did. We went, as part of that five-year ago master planning, we explored, if I go back to the existing plan, we, oh, there's the existing site plan, I think we've worked better. Sorry, I lost my, okay, so existing site plan. As you can see, the, we're right up against the site here. There's very little space in the back, and it also is a direct access to, to the parking lot in, on Runnymede over here that is used also by the community. We explored looking at putting an addition back in here, actually overhanging the addition back in there. We explored putting the addition on grade out in here and trying to get parking put in, in back there, which did not work and made a, kind of a dead-end parking space. We did actually take advantage of as much of the space as we could by adding to the front, but really, short of tearing down and starting over again, it was really the only solution to be able to keep the parking as it was. We tried tearing, this is, some of this is an overhang, and we tried actually lopping off portions of the building in the back to create a bigger parking area back here so that we could actually build on grade here. So we went through probably four or five different iterations before we came up with this one.
And one of the requirements was that a second floor?
Right. One of the requirements from the library was to be able to keep it as close to on-level, you know, as open as possible. So they did compromise in the sense that we, we are up 24 inches on that kind of split level addition, but they were very adamant against having a second story put on top of the building.
All right, thank you. Do you, can, going back to the plan, in your, in the exterior...
The exterior?
The perspectives that you had? The perspectives that you had, the, the overhang over the parking area had, is that glass in that overhang? The plan looks like it's a blank wall.
So yes, in the, in this area, we have some solid wall for bookshelf and also glass windows on either side. And then we have the glass where the corners are the open areas for the collaboration spaces in those quiet rooms. So we don't have in the overhang in this area, we don't have a lot of bookshelves up against the wall. It will be very open and airy.
All right, thank you.
Any other board questions before we move to public comment? Thank you. Any public comment?
Hi, my name is Jane Gally. I live on Barclayden Road in Rosemont. I just, I'm not being obnoxious, really not. What is the lifespan of this building? Do we know? Because the last one lasted 25 years, which is kind of pathetic. I mean, when you put all that money into it and it, it's got to be torn down and rebuilt without, you know, in less than, in like 25 years, it seems kind of a short lifespan for a building.
Yeah, I, I think, first off, I understand your frustration or I can feel it.
It's taxpayer money and...
No, no, I, I get that. And so, but they're not actually tearing the building down in all fairness. They are, they're keeping, it looks to be, I haven't measured it, but eyeballish, maybe about like 80% of the building and then they're making an addition. And the, the driver for this is the demand, they've done the studies. I, I can't speak for the demand, but I'm assuming the demand from the community is there and the way, we're seeing a lot of this with institutionals, all the colleges have been in with all these changes. And the way people want to use this kind of space has changed. So to be relevant and to be of service to the community, they're required to change along or else it will be outdated, nobody will go in it and then it'll just be, it'll be a taxpayer expense which nobody uses, which is actually even worse.
Right. Well, I'm just thinking of the leaking roof, the redoing of the concrete, blah, blah, blah.
No, no, but I...
It was not well-built to begin with. I'm just curious.
That much we can't do anything about.
Well, I'm just wondering how much this will improve that so that it remains a viable building for not having to be, you know, reconcreted, re-roofed, blah, blah, blah over a reasonable amount of time.
I can let the app, we can touch on that for a moment.
So the, the building itself, the original one building is about 40 years old and it was, had a renovation done back in the eighties. The lifespan of roofing materials is usually about 25 or 30 years. So that was, it was re-roofed. We are keeping 95% of the building and we're really, in order to make the look of it different is we are just wrapping the building itself. And the building bones of, you know, is in, they're in good shape. It's steel frame, it's open, it's a lot of open volume ceilings. We're keeping a lot of that character and we're just adding the spaces that we, that they need to be able to make it more functional for the community and...
I mean, I just remember the plumbing...
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't...
And things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just hoping it's going to be a better...
We're repairing all of those, yes, all of those things. And we're trying to make it much more maintenance-free for, for the future. So the exterior is stone and, and drive it and, you know, good materials that will be maintenance-free for longer.
Are you doing, redoing the roof again at this time or are you...
No, the roof was done, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was done, not that far, long ago. We are, because of the way we're attaching, there's a lot, a large portion of the roof that we're actually re-roofing just because of our attachments, but the main hipped version of the roof is still in good shape and so we're not, but, you know, obviously all of our addition will have...
Are you using like rubber roofing?
Yes, in those areas, EPDM, and then we're using metal roofing on a lot of the addition.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I had a question for you about your parking.
I'm sorry, Skip. Can we, is there any other public comment? I'd just like to finish that part of it. Okay, thanks, go ahead, Skip.
I know you tested a lot of configurations. If you flipped the parking around so that the 70-degree parking is right next to the building and the lane is at the edge of the property, that...
Yeah, we did try that. Amy had, asked us to do quite a few different variations on the parking and part of the issue is, again, it's very narrow. So when we flipped the, the parallel parking to the other side of the lot, then we have to add a sidewalk which then reduces our sidewalk, our, our width, four feet, and then reduces the lane from the 15 feet that we currently have to 11 feet, which is below the ordinance. So it's, we looked at it that way, we looked at it with 45-degree parking, we looked at it with 60-degree parking. We did a lot of different sketches. I think Amy can attest to that. She ran us through the paces to try to come up with the best parking configuration we could. And so at this rate, we actually, the existing parking count is 31, or 32, and we are at 31. So we did lose one space.
Are you going, when are you going to zoning?
That is up to the township. There, we are, the next zoning meeting is on the 17th. So we have an application and...
They are not, one of the agenda items that's on tonight is an amendment to the municipal use ordinance that is in front of you and that...
May impact this. There need to go to zoning.
That will impact this and that ordinance was created for projects like this and...
Got it, okay.
When we were looking at that, there was an issue with it, so we're amending the ordinance to correct that.
Thank you.
We did go through the process of the application, so it's all ready to go.
Okay, no more questions?
Oh, we do go to the zoning, or the design review board on Wednesday. That was one of the other things, it was in the letter previously, so we're meeting all of those. And the shade tree commission meeting is tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Yeah, so...
So no comments?
So...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for clarification. We talked a little bit about the, the underpass over the, the addition. The, and we discussed this at our meeting with community vans that are going to be bringing patrons to the library. Are they going to be able to get under, I know you revised the height a little bit, but have you looked at that? You know, our concern was being able to get a van that's going to be bringing people, whether it's accessibility issues or whatnot into the site and underneath versus bringing people in, having them drop off and then having them back out.
So we did, again, look at the, to, in order to accommodate the tallest one, we would have to be at that 11-foot height and that would, in our plan, as I pointed out, which would add another 24 inches to the inside, which would be four risers and 24 feet of ramp or some reconfiguration for the elevator. We did, because of the, the handicap accessibility at the lower end, we felt that those vehicles could drop off here and, and they would have great access to that elevator and accessible entrance right from that, from this end without actually having to come into the parking lot and back out. Alternatively, they could actually pull in, as Kevin said, and, and then they would be required to back out onto West Wayne from that area, but then, and this is not the...
So I just have a question for you. So at the, when the driveway exits, what is the width of that, the driveway at the exit?
This, the width of the exit down here is 20 feet, I believe.
It's wide.
It's wide, it's very wide. We're not narrowing that.
So is it wide enough to have a, a second, you know, like a two-way in just, is only into that one like area that looks like a loading zone?
Yes, you could pull in here, have that, right.
Designate a drop-off zone?
And this is staff parking only as it is because of the dumpster issue. So there's no, if you pulled in here, there would be no like blocking patrons from getting out of that area.
So that could be designated as a drop-off zone?
Yes, it could.
In which case, then they would have a direct, unencumbered shot, not through a parking lot, not through a traffic lane to the, to the elevator and stairway?
Right, if they sat here, patrons would exit that side and go right on to...
I'm talking about pulling into that parking spot.
Oh, okay.
Right there.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about. And was that wide enough for a handicapped vehicle?
I think we would likely have enough dimensional space, but we would have to verify that the slopes were consistent with ADA requirements. I think it does get a little steep there because we dropped the inlet. So I would have to, we'd have to verify that we had the 2% requirement. I think that could be an issue if we were trying to make it an ADA-accessible drop-off location, which I, I think would be prudent if you're going to add one at that location.
I mean, I guess it's either that or the, the front door, right? Because, I mean, you can't have them like, well, you're not, they can't be backing in and...
We, we also don't have the space at the existing, yeah, at the proposed crossing here. That's not wide enough for two-way. So I think, yeah, I, I think the best bet would be if you could establish a loading/unloading zone for deliveries and/or accessible patrons at, at the front. It's, it's, that's the better place for it.
Well, actually then you're, if you're talking about an unloading zone in the street, you're then, patrons are getting off right into a traffic lane so that from an accessibility standpoint is, is not ideal at all. I really recommend you look at raising that a little bit to accommodate through flow underneath, not for fire or emergency apparatus, but at least for the community vans.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem. I mean, we're happy to do it, yeah.
The raising of the building is an issue because to raise it to, for, for the UPS trucks and things like that, it's, it's an 11 feet and we're at nine, so that's an additional 24 inches.
I'm not as concerned for the UPS as I am for the patrons coming on buses and vans.
And ambulance.
And you're, you were referencing raising and lowering the grades by the dumpster?
No.
Or you were not, okay.
He's referencing the overhang, yeah.
One of your concerns is that the floors don't match up inside the library and that the ADA ramp would go to 24 feet?
No, it's currently 24 feet. So it would now be 48 feet long to be able to do that.
48 feet high.
48 feet, for every inch of height, I need a foot of ramp. So I would either need to reconfigure our, our elevator entrance. We don't see, because of the elevator being outside, structurally, we have the elevator going outside of the existing foundations. So we don't have a, a two-stop version of an elevator that could go, you know, forward and sideways that would allow us access to this upper level. So as you can see here, we now have four risers and 24 feet of ramp. If I were to raise the addition another 24 inches, I would then need a, you know, to, to turn this ramp again backwards another 24 feet and add four more risers which would, you know, be the, the, the connection between the two spaces would then become very unconnected. I think it would be, it would not feel like it was all, all on one floor. So we're trying to, to be on one, all on one floor as much as possible, understanding that we need to get some access underneath that overhang.
So is it the, is it just the space, the amount of space that the handicap ramp takes up or is it just the feel and effect and aesthetics and look of having the thing too separated at...
I think it's all of those things.
Too much elevations?
It's all of those things equally. I don't know if the library director would like to speak to that, but it's also, you know, visibility. What we've done here is we've opened up the space that anyone can be within the, the library and be, you know, visible and safely meeting with tutors and, and other community members and, and also have this whole area be connected. Otherwise it'd have to be like staff, there'd be, need to be people up there all the time. It would really feel like it's a second story to this basin.
That, that's really the concern on the library's side is the visibility and, and that connection and just really the safety of, you know, keeping it a much more open feel and being able to monitor what's going on directly from our central core of service there. So that's the, the big concern on our end as far as operational.
Just so I understand this completely, the, the front, the West Wayne side, that's the nine-foot clearance area?
Yes.
And what is the clearance on the South Wayne lot side?
Because of the way that, we have to flatten out the grade underneath there, it tends, it ends up being 10 feet at the, at the other end.
10 feet even?
It's like within a couple inches. It's, it's 10 feet or 10 feet two, it's not lower than 10 feet.
Could you slide this addition that way?
Well, the issue with sliding, and we did look at that also, this was one of the other reiterations, is that the overhang would then be over the doorway, which would then make it so that we are, if you're looking at the lower level plan, we actually have this addition over...
It's over the Windsor room.
Over the Windsor room and over the access to that entry, which then, when we're talking about emergency vehicles, there wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to get under there to be able to access the entry there at that point either.
Unless you picked up one more foot so that you had a 36-foot ramp instead of a 24.
No, but they'd still need 14 feet under there for the emergency vehicles, Skip.
Well, they can't get in from West Wayne anyway.
But what she's saying is if that building is down there, then they don't have an open area to get into that lower level and get upstairs if they need to because the, because the overhang would be in the way. Right? Right?
Right, so this line, which is the dotted line of the overhang, would then come over the stairs if you look at the, the new, this, this is the construction plan. You have the dotted line of the overhang here would then end up being over the entry area, so...
Let me ask you another question. So I think we're all comfortable with the delivery vans on the, on the West Wayne Avenue. I mean, can you solve the problem of the drop-off, community drop-offs in the rear?
Yes, I mean, we can look at having a community drop-off area in the rear, understanding that this, that this area is designated for two staff parking. So when, if we looked at that and rewidened, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, but I'm, sorry, I keep flipping back and forth, but I'm trying to get back to the site plan. If we pushed this island back and widen, and rewiden this to be two ways, we would be losing two additional parking spaces for the staff.
Yeah, but you're already not conforming to parking anyway.
We're not conforming to parking at all anyway.
So you're in for a dime in for a dollar.
Right, exactly.
If that results in a better access there...
Right, and if the township would be willing to have staff park in the South Wayne lot, then, you know, we could definitely make that designated.
The township does, I've spoken to the manager on that. So parking in the South Wayne lot, whatever the library would need.
That is helpful information. So this project for me, are you, you done with your question? This project for me is the epitome of, whenever we talk about hardships, like, does somebody really have a hardship or do they need something, like, this is it. This is where our township library is. This is the land you got, this is the spot you got, this is the perk you got, this is the configuration, this is the one-way street. I mean, the blessing in disguise here is that because South Wayne lot is right next to it and, and the township owns it, that any of this is even possible to consider because you'd be otherwise talking about needing to go through private property and that would be a non-starter for so many of these issues. And it's really, I mean, I'm, the, the library's near and dear to me, so I, I want to try to find a way to do this. It's so many challenges and at the end of the day, it really is about money. If we had all the money in the world in Radnor to start over, I think you alluded to that. And even right now, we're talking about, what is it, a half a million dollars, that grant or something like...
Yeah, it ends up being a million because the township had to meet the grant.
Right, so, you know, it's, I feel the burden of the timing of this and the cost of that. And if, you know, if, if we had all the money in the world to do whatever we wanted here, I think we would try to do something different, but this is the plan you got. The, the only part I'm struggling with is that it does sound like, for whatever reason, you, the, the library is very committed to the one-story concept. We can't hear you, Helen, but...
I'm Helen McGrane, I'm on the board. We, we would have to hire additional staff to staff a second floor. So the ongoing cost of the library...
So again, money. I mean, the constraint is...
If we had all the money in the world, we would go for a second story library, but...
So I guess my question for, and this is more a question for staff, is there any of this that is just a non-starter for, for staff? I assume you've worked out the non-starters as best you can with the library.
I think if we're talking about widening that entrance at the southern end and eliminating the staff parking so that that becomes two-way and the van can pull in there, the drop-off then is coming almost right onto the sidewalk to get to the elevator and accessible route. And then the van would back out like any other car would back out and then proceed through the lot. That makes a little bit more sense than not, you know, dropping them all out in the street. So, yeah, that's something that we'd have to look at the details, but I think it's got merit.
So, yeah, because the whole notion of backing out of the entrance, out onto West Wayne, for me, that's a non-starter. That's not going to work at all. So whatever needs to happen down the bottom to make, you know, what staff's concern is, for me, that's the thing that would need to happen and... for me, that's the thing that would need to happen, and, you know, like I said, just thank goodness the township lot is right next to this, because that is really what's going to make this workable.
Why can you not push the elevator further in to the building so that you can have it open on that second level and eliminate those stairs and ramp?
Again, that's a, it comes into a planning and cost issue in the situation of not wanting to undermine the foundation of the existing building. We are keeping the existing building pretty much intact, so we've added that elevator shaft outside of those existing foundation walls to plant it in the situation further in at this point. I mean, we could possibly look at it, but the, I'm sorry if I keep losing my place on the different floor levels. So there it is in the lower level, and as it stands on the upper level, it allows for the delivery to be right outside of the administrative area where they're actually dealing with the books, and also then gives us access at that entrance, which is more contained, so they can keep that closed in. Another part of that security issue is that the community comes in to use the Windsor Room, but they don't have that open all the time. So by our new lower lobby plan, we can have the community coming into this new vestibule and be able to access both the stair and the elevator, which they currently can't do, to get up to the upper level, and also then to exit that way without having to have the library man or staff or open the doors and unlock those doors to allow access into the community rooms that are only open when people are scheduled to be down there.
Is there any way you can rework that elevator in its current location so that you can enter from what the view would be to the left and exit to the right? And then, when you're on the second floor, you have two different options. You can come out to the left or to the right on different elevations. Is there any way you could rework what's existing around that elevator without actually moving it?
Can you go up one more, one more slide?
Sure.
Yeah, you can. You can.
The other issue we have with that, and I'm sorry to keep bringing, I mean, we did look at a lot of different things, which is why we've been working on this for so long, but that is also the, right along the very edge that allows us to maintain the four-foot sidewalk without reducing the drive lane also, so the elevator, the way it's currently positioned, is, you know, located so that it's longer and narrower as it relates to the building, and then that allows us to have that four-foot sidewalk area.
So you're saying the left and right side aren't wide enough to be a door?
Exactly. The way the elevators, I mean, I can, we can look at other elevator configurations, but the way it currently...
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask just one question, I knew, so if we can go back to the picture, the print showing the parking in front of the dumpster?
Sure.
So, Mr. Corzine, you're confident that you could meet the Planning Commission's requirements that would allow the community van with handicap access pull in there? So we're going to have one-way from West Wayne, and for a short distance, we have two-way. So this van will be able to pull in, drop folks off at an ADA compliant ramp, go in, and that van would legally back out into a two-way lane, just like anybody else, and leave. I mean, the only reason I'm asking, because I think that makes a lot, if that's, if that's correct, because that solves a lot of the problems for the Planning Commission. We don't have somebody backing down a one-way street, we don't have to do major building reconfiguration at a somewhat late date on the project. Does that work? I'm just, for my own edification, and I think for the applicants, for theirs.
It works for me. I mean, I think that as long as we have a viable, a real viable, not a Mickey Mouse entrance, but a real viable entrance, that works for me. Dropping UPS, just all the package stuff comes in the front, nothing comes in the back, that's their direction, just drop off there. So, for me, it does, anyway.
And if we have to change the dumpster configuration, the width, the height, we actually, we pick that up, so that's not a problem, and we would sign that appropriately, you know, community van parking or whatever, because my only concern is, and the library is the applicant, but at this stage of the game, to do major building changes on items that they've already reviewed, it might, and it's not a reason for the Planning Commission to act, you know, could affect how we get, if our grant targets are made, because I think they've done a lot of due diligence on twisting, turning, and flipping the building around considerably.
So pretty much what you're saying is that this is the plan, except for some minor little tweaks like we're discussing here, and that we should, no, not that we have to approve it, but this is, and which was to my comment earlier, this is, to me, this is the plan with some minor tweaks and suggestions. We'll throw our comments in, but then we've got to kick it up to the board.
And I by no means mean to say to the Planning Commission that this is the plan. Please, don't take it that way.
No, I didn't mean it that way, but because of the constraints that we are under with this funding, we can't make major changes to the plan and keep the funding in place. That's what I've heard.
I think that, and also I think we go beyond our purview when we're redesigning the building to, or redesigning parts to affect that, although it does somewhat fall under your purview in that you want certain things to be site-compliant, and I can see why you'd say, "Let's slide this here, let's move this here." My question is, if we have a viable alternative to address the community vans, do we need to, at this point, to go, I mean, I'm not an architect, so I'm just a dirt-kicking civil engineer, so I would point to Mrs. Kimmel and say, "So if we do start these, what does that do? What does that do from a time standpoint, for you to go through these machinations and see if they work?"
As far as the elevator, anything?
Yes. Or any other parts of the building. And I'm by no means just specific to that, I'm talking about all the different things we've spoken of.
Well, so, as far as the architecture documentation would go, I would say it would add at least a month to our documentation process, which would then push off the bidding process, and we would just keep spiraling down the end.
You'd have to come back here, too?
And we would have to come back here, right, exactly, and then start before we could go ahead to the board, which, at the point where the board is the one who...
Yeah, so I think we have to understand that, I don't think that this plan would have ever gotten this far if the Board of Commissioners, who are going to be the ones to make the decision, hadn't given an indication that they were going to work with you and work with this process, and I think all we're doing is delaying something that, this needs to go to the Board of Commissioners for them to put their final approval. So I'm actually going to make a motion that we approve this plan and that the applicant be granted the waivers that they're asking for.
I don't think we should be granting waivers for the stormwater peak rate or the storm, the stream erosion requirements. If they say that the plan can meet those, then we need to strike them, because that's a deal breaker for me.
We would agree with that. Up until a little bit ago, we weren't sure we would, could meet those rates with the parking and piping that we had.
So those waivers get withdrawn, then? They get withdrawn, the waivers, those get withdrawn?
As long as those are withdrawn, that's a different... The other question before we go ahead is the water quality requirements. Had there been any consideration of putting a rain garden of some sort in that landscaped area at the rear of the library to meet some of the storm, or to make an attempt towards providing some stormwater quality?
Yes, we did consider that, and this plan doesn't have it. The set of drawings I have...
Oh, I have that down.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We had them do infiltration testing in the area behind the building, that was it there.
Oh, sorry.
No, I mean, by amending the soils and putting in a rain garden rather than trying to infiltrate plants to uptake the water. I mean, you're putting the landscaping there anyway. I mean, you would just amend the soils and prepare like two rain gardens on either side, and you'd be able, you have enough physical space to amend the soils and make that happen.
And you're talking about this area back here?
Yeah, on either side of the sidewalk, you could put one on either side.
I think if we, I would have no problem putting a rain garden in there, we'd be essentially tearing up some existing landscaping and swapping it for some new landscaping.
Planning on really landscaping that anyway from the plans.
Without eliminating the turf area, I guess is...
I mean, there's a really good educational component there with what Regina's saying. I think it really ties into a library. I think that would be a great thing.
I am concerned, some of the concern is that we're encountering a lot of groundwater in addition to the infiltration rate, and we had some limiting zones, so as long as, as long as those limiting zones and the groundwater didn't create an issue from a technical standpoint, I would have no issue with it.
On our side, often with our programming, we have an inside-outside component, so we use that backspace for programming for children, basically, so they might do something in the Windsor Room and then go out to that side yard, and that's really the only space other than parking lot that we have to be able to be outside for programming, so that is why the library had requested to keep some of that turf space.
So they can sit on the grass?
Normally, it's sort of running around. We recently had a kite workshop where they made kites inside and then went out to that small space to fly their kites, that type of thing.
Mr. Corzine, is there anywhere else on site you could do some type of BMPs as Regina has put forth?
We could consider putting a BMP a little bit west here above this heritage tree, but now we get into the conversation of root disturbance on a 36-inch oak, that, you know, we're already, we are taxing it a little bit likely by putting the porch here where we are. I would, we're really, we may really seal its fate by excavating down 18, 24 inches to amend the topsoil to put the infiltration in.
I wouldn't recommend putting it near the trees at all. I think that that area in the rear could provide enough room for such a BMP, and I don't, I don't think you can go on the other side of the building, but, I mean, it's in order to meet the ordinance, so, I mean, it's, I would hope that you would pursue that.
Yeah, and the good thing about a rain garden is if we can come to terms with its shape and its size, it can be any shape it needs to be, and it can be any size it needs to be. In all likelihood, we can't meet the volume requirement, you know, based on the calculations in the ordinance, but if we can put one in that makes everybody happy and technically is going to be functional, I certainly don't see why. And like Steve said, there are really valid educational opportunities that go along with that BMP.
In terms of the lawn use, do you have, like, the children on either side of the path, or do you pick the side that's a little more interior?
Typically, it is sort of just a free-for-all in that area, but we are, you know, I'm certainly open to looking at how we can incorporate...
Maybe you could put one in instead of two.
Right, exactly.
We would have, you know, this kind of oval area is what we have carved out as turf space, so we have from the back of the dumpster all the way to the edge of this kind of gray border, which is a perennial planting area anyways, so there's space.
That's what I was noting, is that you're going to re-landscape anyhow, so it would just be in addition of amending the soils and providing maybe an underdrain, whatever it takes to make that viable. But obviously, your testing that you've done will dictate how deep and where
Right.
that would be feasible.
We had testing done there in the event that this exact conversation came up, so we have good data to support doing it or not doing it, yes.
And the other comment, again, with the elevator, is that really, not just, I mean, nine feet is really low, that's a really low clearance. If it exists already today, people live with a nine-foot clearance, but rarely does anyone create a nine-foot clearance for vehicles these days if they can avoid it. So that's why I'm bringing up, I mean, if it can't be done, it can't be done, but if there was a way to reuse that elevator space to even get another foot and still get everything you need where you're really on truly one level, and to eliminate the ramp and the stair would be the only thing you would need on that floor, you'd have extra floor space, you could bring your platform out to accommodate the elevator. But it's a matter of dimensions, it can't happen, then I understand.
The only thing I think you could explore is one of those mechanical...
Yes, the mechanical chairlifts are very, I mean, I don't even...
That's about the only thing...
Most people don't even like to use them, they're very cumbersome.
I know.
And so that's why we wanted to have the ramp version, because the ramp being wide enough, it feels inviting, kids, anybody can walk up the ramp and get to that upper level versus having to use the elevator. And the elevator, even if I turned it to the side, because it's a half-story, there's no area to get in and then up, you know, it's like you come in on one side and out the other side, so it's one of, it's just a very, if we had a three-sided elevator, it would work perfectly, but they don't make those yet.
Any other board comment?
I would suggest that we let the engineers work out those details, because we know we're going to go through with this anyway. I think, you know, we need to move on with it.
Okay, then.
I just have one quick comment. My questions were not to cast doubt about the architecture plan or all the work you've been through, but to give you an opportunity to tell us how much work you've been through. And so I think you've been through, it seems like you've been through a tremendous amount, sounds like you've looked at every opportunity you could find on the site, and so, I think it's a nice plan, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, you're on deck.
So I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of this plan as presented, granting waivers one through four. You asked for, what, granted one, five, six, seven, and eight of the groundwater things.
No, one and two, one, two, three, four, and one and two.
Four are pulled.
No, no, it's, that's seven and eight.
Pardon me? Yeah, they've been pulled. So it's one, two, three, four, and one and two.
I think I'm looking at a different list.
It's seven and eight. It's seven and eight. So they're eight total. They still need the groundwater recharge waiver, they don't have that capability.
So I move that we approve the plan as presented, granting waivers one through six, and that the applicant will, you know, get any zoning relief that may be required.
And we'll also attempt to provide water quality.
And we'll also, we'll also provide the enhanced entrance at the lower, at the lower entrance for a van.
For community vans.
Do they have to, Susan, say something? He thought he'd have to change the grade because of that, from four to two?
They've got to, they've got to work on that. They've just got to satisfy that requirement.
So adjust the grading and eliminate the employee parking.
They have to satisfy the requirement.
Yeah. This isn't a requirement, we're, this is like a kind of an accommodation.
No, we're not going to tell them how to do it, though.
We want them to work it out.
They want to work it out.
Oh, you're saying to staff satisfaction, fine.
We don't, we don't going to dictate, that's all.
And provide community van access that is satisfactory to the township staff.
Correct. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Next on the agenda is 427 East Lancaster Avenue, preliminary approval. Yes, there's been a request for a five-minute break, which is a great idea, so.
You.
Yep.
Okay.[515.53]
Their work from, they worked on the recent Eagle Village projects that we've done over there. We were here in February, meeting just to introduce the plan to you. We said at that time, we weren't going to make a, ask for a recommendation. Since the initial submission on this, we had met with Roger Phillips and Kevin Kachansky, Ray Daly, the Fire Marshal, as well as the LeVins, the neighbors of the property on either side. We made a lot of revisions to the plans. I think it's fair to say there were two major issues with the last set of reviews. One, there were two potential zoning issues that we have resolved with Kevin Kachansky. He has agreed that we don't need zoning relief for the two issues that were raised. And second, at the risk of oversimplifying, I think it would be best to say that there were a lot of comments on ways to improve the access into the site, and we did a lot of things to address that. And I thought I would run through that quickly, and then we could go through the review letters, if you like. But with regard to the access, I guess I'd like to say, first, the property now has five apartments, I believe it is, a medical office and dental offices. It's got two curb cuts to Route 30. Our proposal will reduce the curb cuts down to one, which is usually highly favored for traffic access management. Although the code doesn't require a traffic study, one kicks in when you do 50 units or more. We have 22. We had Amy's comment, which asked for a limited traffic study, and we've submitted that. And so that's kind of the traffic front. On access, we did a lot of things after meeting with Roger and Ray Daly, the Fire Marshal, and Chris will correct me if I've missed anything, but I'll point out a few things. We widened the driveway. It's now 25 feet wide. We increased the curb radiuses to meet code.
Excuse me a second. Could we have the overheads?
Oh, I didn't realize that wasn't even on. There we go.
If you'd start again.
So we widened the driveway width to 25 feet. We added curb radiuses of 10 feet, which comply with code. We were asked to look at, to see, oh, before I go there, this is the main garage entrance. We were asked to widen that to 22 feet, to meet code, which we did. We were asked to look at reconfiguring the building. Could we provide a second means of egress from the parking garage? So we were able to add the second door back here. It's going to function as an exit only, and that will assist with moving the traffic, or the trash, out of the building, and just provide another means for people to get out of the garage, and things like that. We added, we spent a lot of time talking about this area in the front of the building. On the one hand, Scott, as the developer, is very concerned with what this is going to look like, and wanted to keep this area in front as green as possible. So we didn't have any kind of turnaround there in the original plan. But after meeting with Roger Phillips and Ray Daly, we thought, in addition to widening the driveway and increasing the radiuses, that there should be some turnaround here to help facilitate, it could be either a quick spot for maybe a FedEx van to stop, or to facilitate turning in and out by some of the delivery vehicles. We spoke to Ray about fire access. He basically said that in most cases, you know, a fire truck would want to stay out here in Lancaster Avenue. The building would be sprinkled under code. But we did provide some turning radius diagrams to Roger and Amy, and we had gotten from Ray, you know, an ambulance, a typical trash truck, and even a big fire truck. And we were just talking to Amy, we think with some tweaks to that, that, you know, we get a reasonable access in and out of here. So our thought was to provide for enhanced access, which we have done, but not overdoing it on impervious coverage. We're still under our impervious coverage allotment, so if we had to increase these things, we could. We're allowed to go up to 70% impervious in this zone. I think we're at about 63% or 64%, but we don't want to add more paving if we don't have to. We think we struck a reasonable balance between having it look good with a reasonable amount of green, and, you know, reasonable access in and out of the site. The property is in the R6 district, which, as far as I can tell from reading the code, was added in 2004, and the only use that's allowed in this district, it's called high-density multifamily. It's a limited part of the township. I believe it's the only part that's R6. It's shown here, and the dark brown is the R6 district. And our project will actually eliminate a non-conforming use. The medical and dental offices are not permitted, so it'll be eliminating a non-conforming commercial use, and bringing the use of the property into compliance with the residential With that introduction, I can go through and have Chris help me go through the review letters, if you like.
George, just before you get into that, George.
Yes.
At the February meeting, we said, you know, there was an objection made, and we strongly suggested that you work with your adjacent property owners in some way, or have discussions. Can you report anything on that before you get into the letters?
Yes, we worked with Mr. Levin, and you can see that he's not here this evening. So we have addressed his concerns, and we have understood from him that, you know, he wouldn't be here this evening, and I believe he is satisfied. So I was going to start with the Roger Phillips letter dated February 27th. Number one is the, one of the zoning issues that we resolved with Kevin Kachansky. Number two is just noted, so noted, we will comply with the building height limitation. Number three, we will go to the Design Review Board. That's a will comply. Number four is advising that a lighting plan is needed, and that there cannot be glare. That's a will comply. Number five is the slope issue, and this letter confirms that the zoning officer has determined that that is not an issue for us. Moving on to Roman numeral two, subdivision and land development. Number one is a standard comment about water, so that's a will comply. Number two is a will comply. We're investigating what the actual right-of-way is out there. Chris is working on that. Number three is the comment I addressed before. The code says that there should be a 10-foot-wide radius for driveways. We have provided that. We don't feel that we can provide any more. Mainly, there's an inlet here that is constricting us, but what we have does meet code. Number four.
Four was just the labeling issue.
Oh, yeah, that's a will comply. We do have the 22-foot width, so we'll just label that on the plan. Number five, that's a will comply, as to number of trees. Number six is, again, will comply as to street trees. Number seven, this is, again, addressing the access and circulation. Must be reviewed and approved by the code official Fire Marshal. That's a will comply. As I said, we had met with him previously. We will continue to work with him on that. Number eight is a will comply about the water, and stormwater management, Chris tells me, our will complies. We are at preliminary plan approval, so we will be back for final as well. Should I move on to the Gilmore letter? So the Gilmore letter, our traffic engineer Frank Tavani could not be here due to scheduling conflict, so I'm going to report what he told me. As I said, Amy's original letter asked for a limited traffic impact study. We did submit that. The code normally requires a traffic study only when you have 50 or more units, but since there were a lot of questions, we wanted to go ahead and prepare the traffic impact study. So Frank tells me that comment 1A is a will comply. 1B was a typo in his report. He'll correct that. And 1C, I talked to Amy about the meeting. This is really technical stuff with PennDOT. We'd like to work that out with PennDOT and Amy, what would be required there.
I'm sorry, which one was that?
1C, under SALDO in Amy's letter, on page two. It's a very complicated thing, as far as I understand, and I understand from our traffic engineer, PennDOT does not always require that, so we would like to work with PennDOT and Amy on that. Number two, this is a waiver that Amy identified. I think I've seen this come up on other projects. Apparently, what the SALDO requires engineers to use for trip generation is out of date, and we use the more current IT manual, so I think what Amy's saying is she likes that approach, but technically, we need a waiver for that, so I guess we would request that waiver. Number three, talks about, would we, we had done a analysis of whether there should be extra turn lanes on Route 30. According to our traffic engineer, that is not warranted by this project, and we will add that to the traffic study. I am not sure if we will get up to a level of Service C. I believe we have one movement that's a level of Service D. In PennDOT speak, it's my understanding that level of Service D is usually acceptable. So if we need a waiver for that, to have that condition, we would be seeking that. Again, I don't, I don't think we took any credit for the traffic that's already there with regard to the apartments and the medical and dental use, and we were, we didn't take any credits for the proximity to the train station or pedestrians, so I think we were pretty conservative with our study. So if we need a waiver to be at level of Service D, we would request that.
Yeah, but George, why, why, why wouldn't you take the credits and not need the waiver, then? I don't understand.
I don't know if taking the credit would cure the problem for the waiver. I know Amy is very conservative, and we want to, you would want us to be conservative in how much credit we could take, so I think our traffic engineer's hunch is that that won't, won't cure it. It would make it probably better, but I'm guessing it's not going to solve it. If, if she would let us take the credits and it did solve it, then that would be fine, but I have a hunch that it's not going to solve it. And again, we only need the waiver arguably because we did the traffic study that we weren't really required to do, because we weren't up to 50 units. Number four, we will comply. That's to keep Gilmore in the loop on our PennDOT submissions. Number five, if I read this correctly, this is a provision that would say, on a road like Route 30, if you just read the code, it would say there should be a larger right-of-way than there is now. Our study demonstrates that our traffic isn't causing the need to widen that right-of-way, so it's our position that we don't think our, we have any need to widen that right-of-way. I don't think PennDOT would want more right-of-way. I'm not sure if the township would want one little piece of extra right-of-way on this little narrow property, but we could take that up with the commissioners, but we prefer not to provide more right-of-way. Six.
So, so George, is this a waiver, then?
Is it a waiver, Amy? So I guess it would be a waiver.
Okay.
Does that impact your setback?
No, I think we would still comply. Is that right, Chris? Or it doesn't matter, anyway?
It's off by about two feet, so I think we could, I think we could do it.
We could cure it if it.
Could you step near the microphone, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Chrystian. Chrystian, the civil engineer. If you measure, if you put in the 40-foot half right-of-way and measured the setback from the new right-of-way, which I think arguably sometimes you're allowed to measure from the legal, it would go into the corner of the building by about two feet. So if we had to address that, we could correct it, but I think our position is not.
Stated another way, if we had to provide it, we would redesign the building so as to not need a variance. It's only two feet. But we're going to ask the commissioners not to require that, because we don't think it's warranted by our project. Comment six, and Amy, tell me if I've gotten this right, but I think she's speaking about this area here, which was the second exit that we added. I think we could clarify the plan when we come back for final, to clarify that, but it is noted here to be a one-way secondary exit, so it's going to only be an exit, and it is 15 feet wide. When you look into the SALDO, it was our reading that that is adequate for a one-way drive, basically.
George, would you put those little, what do you call those things? Treadles? To keep people from using, how are you going to regulate that it's not used as a two-way? Other than to put those little things up that spike the tires if you go the wrong way?
Well, I'll let Sam, the architect, or Scott, address this as well, but this is going to be a garage, basically just accessible for the residents. There'll be doors. The residents will have a garage door opener, and there'll be a keypad code, so the residents are the only ones that really should be in there, and they'll know which way to go. If the township wanted some signage there, we could do that. I don't, treadles might be a little extreme, but we could work with the township on the best way to do that. Do you guys, Scott or Sam, do you have any thoughts on that?
Sam Gerbino, the architect. I think, like George was saying, that it is only for the residents, and so, sorry.
Point on the other map, please.
It is only for the residents, so I think they will know that they're not supposed to go, it is a one-way, and I don't think we would, we would like to not preferably have a sign or treadlers there if we, you know, don't have to.
Well, if it's one way, you can make the doors only operate.
Right, yeah.
That way. So one would automatically open when you're leaving.
Exactly, right. In your, your little control, when you wouldn't have it work up there.
So that was six. Seven, I think these are all will complies. One of the things that we, there's basically going to be a new sidewalk along there, so that's all will comply. Chris, let me know if I've got any of these wrong. Eight, this is the access and circulation we talked about before. Eight A is a will comply. B is a will comply. C, maybe, Chris, you could explain this. I think you talked to Amy about this before we started.
George, while Chris walks up, is, is the intention for this to be private, private trash, or Radnor trash?
I think projects like this have to be private trash.
Well, that's why, I didn't know why we were using the measurement of a Radnor township truck, just because of the height of it?
I think that's just something we had, so Ray gave it to us when we met with him, but this will be private, and the HOA will contract.
You will have an HOA. I didn't see anything in here about an HOA, so okay.
Yeah, these will be condominium units. They'll be an HOA to be responsible for the trash and some of the other upkeep of the Maybe you can address this one, Chris.
Maneuverability diagram, and I believe what Amy's comment was, is that she didn't want the, the vehicle to go over the center line, and so I think that's just an error that I can correct by pushing the maneuverability diagram over. We don't want to, I mean, if it overlaps by a foot or so, we don't really want to make the entrance any wider. It's already 25 feet. I understand it's Lancaster Avenue, but I think part of the point is to come in slow and to not have it be like a street where you're coming around a big curve, coming in quickly.
So 8D is about the trash removal.
Sorry, George, sees it will comply? Is that, is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
8D is about, asking about the trash removal, which I had addressed in one regard, so it'll be private hauler with the HOA, and Sam can talk about this before, but what, the trash truck is not going to go in the garage. There's two trash rooms. It's my understanding that the units will have a, in the hallways, there'll be trash chutes in the two locations in the building, and then there'll be a manager or an employee that has to take the trash out, and there's, this is done in buildings like this. What's it called, Sam? A caddy? It's basically a mechanical device that looks something like this, that pulls these dumpsters out, so the dumpsters will, can be pulled out to this location, and the thought is that the, you know, the trash truck, when it comes, I'm guessing it'll come once a week, maybe something like that, you know, can come back to access this area out of the way of the main entrance, and then the trash truck can proceed back out, you know, using this turnaround to leave. But this is how it's going to be done. We don't want any large trucks in this garage. And I understand that's a pretty common way to handle trash for a building like this. So that's 8D.
Question on that. Is your trash, your turnaround up front there, right as you come in the driveway, and then you're parking the little trash caddy all the way in the back?
Well, what we envision happening, it'll be a private hauler, so we can dictate what size truck they come, but.
But what's your intention?
But the intention is, there's two types of trash trucks. You could have a front loader, the one that.
Yeah, well, my question is, where's the trash going to sit, and is the trash truck backing in?
I believe it's going to be, it's going to be taken. Here's one trash room. It's going to come here. This other one's going to come here. They'll be staged back here. The intention is, the trash truck, if it was a front loader, could pull in, pick up the dumpsters, and then back out and go here, or if it was a back-loaded truck, they could, they could pull in there and back up.
So they're basically backing up the length of the property, whether it's going in or coming out?
Right. And we don't see that happening frequently, and they're a professional driver, so it'll probably be one of their easier sites, I'm guessing. They have a lot of challenging sites they go into. 8E, I don't believe this is a code requirement. We don't really see a place to provide a secondary means of access for emergency services. The property's very narrow. As I said, the building will have sprinklers. We've provided for, you know, reasonable access. Ray Daly told us, you know, the fire trucks would probably stay out here. We've provided for reasonable access in, so if there was a blockage here, you know, the residents, you know, would, could walk out of the building. You know, with a narrow site like this, I just don't see any other place to put an emergency access, and I don't think we really need one. D, general comments. Number one is a sort of a repeat of what we talked about, the right-of-way lines. That's a will comply. Number two, that's just a heads-up, did the applicant want to consider some sort of height warning going into the garage? I think ideally, we wouldn't have anything. They're garage doors just for the residents. If we had to put up a sign, I guess we could. I drove by the Pembroke North, which is right here, and they have a couple garage doors. I didn't see any height assembly or any signs there, but we could look into that if the township desired us to. D3, we'll provide a pavement and marking sheet. D4, is that a will comply, Chris? The curb? Will comply. Number five, there's one utility pole. We're planning to put the sidewalk around the back of it. And number six is a will comply. As I said, we're here for preliminary approval. We think this will be a, a good project. It is in keeping with the zoning. It'll bring a fresh look residential to this little stretch of Route 30. We do have some architectural renderings that Sam has done. We think it'll be a good project that complies with the zoning, and we'd like to get your recommendation for preliminary approval, and we would be back for final. Do you have those allegations?
Board questions?
So I have a couple, a few questions. One is, in R6, did you show, hang on. First of all, why did we get such a tiny plan on this one? Like, we got a full-size plan for Garrett Avenue that had barely anything to look at, and then we got this teeny-tiny, hard-to-read plan. I just don't know why we got different-sized plans this month, but this was really hard to read, just so you know. And one of the things I was looking for on it is in R6, 280363A, talks about, in an R6, you have to provide 2,100 square feet of, of lot area for every unit, and I just don't know if that calculation is on here. And it might be, I just can't.
Yeah, that's on here, up here in the chart. We've got 2,292 for each unit.
There it is, tiny. Okay, good, thank you. Also, just not going to get Radnor to pick up, that was a question. Amy, the questions that the applicant said that they would comply, will comply, do you have any ongoing or continuing traffic concerns? Are you just going to work them all out?
We'll, we'll work them all out.
Okay.
We've got final to be able to work things out.
Okay. So the comment in the letter about the, the steep slopes definition didn't apply. Can somebody explain that to me? Because I looked at the definition of steep slopes, and I don't know why it didn't apply. It's on page two of the Gilmore letter?
Steep slopes in the Gilmore letter?
I'm sorry, Gannett letter.
It's in, it's comment number.
It's on page two, comment five, under zoning. It says, "The Township Zoning Officer has determined that the steep slopes are exempt under this section of the code."
There, there's a provision in the code referring to lot area. So if you go to 280112J, single lots existing as a date of the adoption of this section, which are not of sufficient size to be subdivided, are exempt from the provisions of this section except for B, C, E, and H. So those sections don't prohibit disturbance of steep slopes. This site is non-conforming with lot size, thereby it is not able to be subdivided, and that provision would apply.
Okay, so it's because of that? All right, thank you. That makes sense. I just looked at the definition of steep slopes. The other question I had. You gave the, you gave the comment that you're going to figure out the whole height of the building thing, right, all the way around, George?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, we're just at preliminary plan, so.
Right.
The definition of building height requires more specific grading and architectural plan.
So the fee in lieu of, I just didn't see it in the letter. How did the fee in lieu of get worked out for this particular project? Do we know?
We're planning on paying the recreational impact fee. Is that what you mean?
Yes, is that, so is that referenced anywhere, Roger? I didn't see it, or?
No, it's not in the letter, but we'll deal with that at final approval.
Okay, good. And then, why does this project, why do they not have to? My biggest concern about the, the way this thing is configured is that there's no holding area for a moving van. 22 families are going to move in and out of this place, and I don't know where they're parking when they're moving in and out, and I don't understand why Luella House had to provide, which only had 12 units, had to provide a pull-off, off-street parking loading area, and that, like, that was a big fat deal, and people couldn't park in it, and they can't use it for parking, because we had to have a very dedicated parking loading area for Luella House, and even maybe at Adalburger, but not for this project. And I can't see this being anything but a fiasco when a moving van pulls into this place and parks itself and blocks every single resident trying to get in and out of here.
Well, I think there's plenty of spots here. I mean, moving won't be frequent. You know, that's one of the points of this area back here, and you can tell the, these aren't big units, so I don't know if they'll always bring a big moving truck, but I would think this would be the most logical place for them to go.
So I guess this is more of a question of staff. Is there a provision where they had to provide one of those? And you guys consider that end spot the spot? Is that how this went?
I don't believe a provision applies on this, but I will certainly take your comment into consideration and look into that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, that stuck out for me. You guys all remember the Luella House issue, right? The only thing, George and I might have missed it, on page four of, I'm going to see whose letter this is, sorry. Gilmore's letter about relocating some utility pole. Did you, did you address that?
Yeah, there's one utility pole that I don't think Amy was speaking about that is being relocated. Is that right, Chris? To widen the driveway. There's another utility. being relocated. Is that right, Chris, to widen the driveway? There's another utility pole.
This is about the getting the side, the four-foot sidewalk?
Right. We're going to get the four-foot sidewalk, but we're going to go around the back of the utility pole.
And it's still going to be four feet?
Yes. Is that right, Chris?
You're very clear on that. Okay. All right. And Mrs., there was a person commenting tonight, and it is actually true throughout the township, where we have some areas that there are sidewalk, and then there's this utility pole smack dab in the middle of it, and it really does impact. And you have to have a two-foot clearance around that pole and to then have your four feet. Is how I'm reading the comment from Amy on the, on page...
No. The, the utility pole has to be two feet from the face of curb.
Oh, okay. All right. And then the four feet on the other side of it?
And then the four feet is another requirement to allow for the clearance on the sidewalk. So depending on where they locate it, if it's located greater than two feet from the road, but that would be encroaching on the sidewalk, they would run their sidewalk around it to the rear, or they would move the utility pole further away. It's their choice.
Okay. I'm just checking a couple of quick other notes. Why are you going for a planning model exemption?
I assume because we qualify for one, but Chris will have to answer that.
I can, I can address that. That's the process that DEP requires. You, you file a, a mailer, that's an exemption mailer, and DEP determines whether you need a full-blown planning module or not. In this case, they probably will need a full-blown planning module, but that's a DEP decision.
So then the waiver we wouldn't be able to grant, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
So the notes from, I'm going to see where this came from. Oh, from Chris Yone, says that the planning module exemption waiver was included in the initial submission for approval by the township.
And we will review that, and then that gets signed by me and gets submitted into DEP. And where does that stand now, Chris?
And I think I can help with that.
We've just been seeing more of those recently.
I think that just has to do with the terminology of the waiver. Their packet form is called the waiver packet. And so we're, I'm not, we're not asking for a waiver.
Yeah, that's not a waiver from the township.
Right.
That's, that's DEP terminology.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Those were...
Any other board question before we get to public comment?
With the sidewalk going behind the utility pole, the sidewalk's going to be continuous, or is it going to bend to go around it?
Chris?
So there are two spots on, on this eastern side is where we have to relocate a utility pole over here. We need to stay two feet back from the curb. The sidewalk will be continuous behind it. The other place where there's an existing utility pole on this side, the sidewalk, along, along the frontage on this property, there's going to be a grass strip in between the curb and the sidewalk. On the adjacent property, the sidewalk is right up against the curb, so it is going to angle behind the utility pole, but you can see utility poles right at the property line. So we just need to make this portion of the sidewalk a little bit wider to maintain the four feet.
Is there any public comment this evening?
As I recall from the last meeting, there was a problem with one of the neighbors there, Mr. Levin. Some sort of a legal issue? What's happening with that?
That's what I had addressed before. We...
I'm sorry, what?
That's okay. We, we've addressed his concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Any other additional board comment?
It just strikes me that although you can build this, and we see this over and over, if it was a tiny, moderately tiny bit smaller, some of the issues with access, turning around, moving vans might be mitigated. I don't know how everybody else feels.
It's very tight. It's very tight.
It's also a situation where if there were fewer units, that traffic study maybe wouldn't be, you know, quite so bad. That'd seed of the day.
Did you have, did you have, you had a presentation to make? The architectural drawing? Oh, okay. Sorry.
Well, we do have elevations we could show you. They're, they're small.
Same ones in the packet from last time?
They're modified, I think, to include the garage door, the second garage door, but we could put them up here. And, you know, on the units, we, we don't want to decrease our units, as you might expect. We believe the plan does comply. We're at less impervious than we are permitted, and this is exactly the type of thing that is allowed in the R6, the high-density multifamily. And this is the architecture that Sam and Jeff Martin have been working on.
Will be, there be the ability for residents to walk all the way around the structure? Or is that going to be gated off at that kind of trash area back at the end? Is it going to have a gate back there, or will people be able to, if they choose, to use that little bit of land that's behind?
We're not proposing any gates at this time. I mean, the, the property does slope up from the front to the back, and we have a lot of landscaping requirements that there's not going to be a lot of room to walk in between the new landscaping, but we don't, we're not proposing any gates to block it.
With regard to the landscaping, we're always open to reducing the number if you increase the size, if that works for you, you know. That's been negotiated before, because I know sometimes it's hard to put them all in, and then they're maintaining. There's an issue with maintaining.
I mean, we could look at that at final...
If it makes sense.
Right. Yeah, we have a landscape plan, but, you know, there's, a lot of it is important on the sides to the neighboring property owner, but we could certainly look at, you know, reducing the planting as an amendment when we come to final plan.
George, what is that along the east side? Is that, is that a wall? Is there going to be a wall there? Just the east, right on the right?
Where are you pointing? I'm sorry.
What is, what's, what separates the property? What's going to be there?
So we are proposing a fence along the property line, but this brown shade is a walkway along the side of the driveway.
And what's the, what's the grade from street, from frontage to rear? Because the elevation one that you put up was...
This walkway is, and...
No, no. I just wondered what the grade was from, from the frontage street to the rear. No? Yes? I can't read the topo line, so I can't, I can't tell you.
You know, I did submit 18 copies of the, the large plans, which I believe is the requirement. So, I mean, this, I think this is...
It looks like it's almost 20 feet.
This is the easiest way to explain it. I do have grade lines along this walkway, and that's a 5% slope.
Well, I've got different, I've got different numbers on my sheet.
Yeah, you know, the railroad is back there, and that definitely goes up as you go back toward the railroad.
Thank you, George.
Which in one way is nice, because it, you know, breaks up the look of the building, as you can see here on the elevation.
That flat area between the two masses of buildings, I assume that's open, and appears so on the elevation.
Is that right, Sam?
No. It is a covered area. It will be sloped ever so slightly behind what is like a little bit of a parapet wall. So it is covered for the parking underneath.
Okay. What is going to...
Yeah. Yeah, that's the...
But this is open here, so...
Yes, yes. It's open between the two buildings.
You can see through?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, that area behind the parapet wall covering the parking garage, what is going to be on that roof?
That, that's not fully flushed out yet. It'll either be a standing seam or some sort of rubber roof membrane.
How about like a green roof?
If you do something like that, then we have to provide access up to it to maintain it. And we can't, given...
Why?
Because given where we have parking here and the grade difference in the back, it would cause for such a ramp that it wouldn't be accessible through any other way to get to it. And given the way the units laid out in the two separate buildings, you would have to make a big, long hallway right through somebody's unit to get to it from, from inside the building.
It doesn't seem to be that high. I think it would be a nice amenity.
It is high.
Between the two, for when you're looking down, you wouldn't just see a black roof.
Right. And we did look at that. Both Jeff and I did look at that, and it just, it doesn't work with the, the difference in heights and getting, providing access up to it.
How high off the ground is that from the front?
At least, probably about 15 feet.
When we get the next plans, can we get big ones that we can read?
We'll take that up. We're going to take that up as a new business at the end.
Yeah, we'll make sure that they're all full-size plans coming through.
On, on major plans like this, if it's a little thing like...
On any plans, absolutely.
Okay.
We submitted a boatload of plans. That's all I know.
That's between us. That's, that's...
Of all sizes.
That's, that's between us. Well, I'm not too happy as anyone else is with the density here, but I don't know that we got much of a choice. So if they're going to, I mean, I think we need to make a motion if we, and if somebody can make it, but I mean, they seem to be will complying with everything, and promise to work out everything else. There's, I guess there are probably two open, or maybe three open items, which are a little fuzzy in my mind.
So what are the actual waivers that are required here?
Well, that's what we're going to get to right now, so...
I think the only thing we have identified related to the, not to beat a dead horse, the traffic study that we didn't need to prepare, there was the one about using the proper trip generation, and there was the one about the whole...
Hold on a second, George, but I want to be clear with that one. Amy has, that's our request that you need that waiver. Is that right, or?
Yes. You're required to have a waiver because they're not following what is written in the ordinance. However, the numbers that they provided are the ones that I would prefer that they use.
Okay, so that doesn't count as a waiver against you.
Good.
All right. I mean, in my mind.
I like that way of thinking.
You know, I mean, we asked you. We asked you to do it. So let's get to the...
And then the other one is, I mean, we're going to refine the numbers, but to be safe, the level of service D versus C. D is, as far as PennDOT, and as far as I've always heard, that's an acceptable level of service. And again, we're in a provision that says we shouldn't have had to do the traffic study anyway. And then the only other potential waiver that we were going to take up with the Board of Commissioners was whether we should provide additional right-of-way along Lancaster for this narrow little property when our traffic study doesn't seem to suggest that it's warranted. So those would, are the only three, I believe, that are at issue.
Okay.
So that's, that's the rub. If we recommend the right-of-way waiver, we allow that extra two feet closer to Lancaster Avenue. If, do you have, are you at your maximum setback in the rear?
We are, but we can easily, I mean, it won't be hard to, to tweak it by two feet. We can easily satisfy that. We don't want to do that.
So I guess that's, that's the deal here. Whenever we waive the right-of-way, we allow the setback to encroach more on the road, anytime and everywhere. So that's something we have to, and I mean, two feet is, you know, that's small, but in some cases, it's not. So that's something we need to kind of be aware that we're doing.
And there's case law, and John Rice and I have gone over it before. And I don't want to get into legal discussion here, but...
That doesn't mean that we agreed on it. That just means we've gone over it.
I said we've gone over it, but, but I didn't remember seeing a case that disputed my case that suggested that we probably don't have to give the right-of-way. But, I mean, it's two feet. It's minor. I don't even know if it's two feet across the whole thing. It might just be a tweak, so.
Are you offering to make that two-foot change? Is that what's going on here?
No, we prefer not to. We don't think our project warrants providing additional right-of-way. We don't think PennDOT will want the right-of-way. We're not sure it serves any purpose for the township to have. It's going to be one little narrow property along Route 30. So as I said, we're...
With a lot of improvements on it.
Eventually, all of Route 30 would be redeveloped, and we give the opportunity every time.
Just stop a minute. I want to have board discussion now, so if you could just have a seat, George. Thanks. I appreciate your input, but I don't want to have a discussion back and forth. It's time for us to discuss and decide.
There is one other issue that, George, I don't know if you're going to want to go up to the mic, but item six...
He said he couldn't, Amy. Sorry.
I, I listen.
If it pleases the board. Item six is talking about the parking aisles. When you discussed the fact that the trash trucks would be coming up and using that rear area to get to the onsite removal, effectively, you're turning that into a two-way aisle there with a 15-foot width, and that's just not acceptable. You need to widen that area in there.
Well, we can have the trash truck stop here, then.
What are you going to do? Have them park on the roadway? Because I'm pretty sure that the...
Chris says we can make it 22.
Just a second. The, the ordinance does require that sanitation trucks must be able to maneuver safely and adequately onsite. And having them stop in the middle of that driveway, not knowing what time, you are effectively shutting off any exit from any of the vehicles coming out of the parking garage.
Chris says we can make it 22, so if the planning commission wants it to be 22, we can make it. We, we have room on impervious.
Well, particularly if you're going to use that back area as your planned area for trucks and loading and unloading, then it's, trucks are going to be going down there, and cars could be coming out, so it's definitely two-way.
Yeah. If that's what you want, we'll do it. I mean, the trash truck comes so infrequently to have more paving. Seems not really needed, but we have the room to do it, so we could do it if you like.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Amy, for bringing that up. You want to make that, put that on the list there, Susan?
We will comply.
You know, is that a full will comply?
Well, I have to say the number where...
Okay.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to chime in a little bit on the right-of-way. It's not, it's one of the few things, it's not a hardship, a material hardship for you. Someday, it would be great here and there if Lancaster had a center turn lane. I read that in one of the letters, and it's maybe the first step, but as properties redevelop, that's when you want to do it. And it doesn't have to be the whole section of Lancaster. There's bits and pieces of Lancaster elsewhere that have center turn lanes, and maybe we could use one on Wayne.
Good suggestions, Skip. Any other comments?
Yeah, I noticed one of these little numbers that I could sort of read, that the front yard, as they're proposing it, is 37 feet. And, let's see, where was it? The minimum front yard is 30. So they have a few extra feet there, and I think we ought to take the...
No, I think it's a great suggestion from Regina and Skip, so. Yeah. So do we feel like we're ready for a motion? We did ask for public, and no public came up. So...
I want to get the waivers that were put in.
I don't think we're granting any, except for Amy's. Was there one we missed? Which one? Level of service D, right. Amy, what are your thoughts on that whole level of service CD, and the whole fact that they didn't have to do the traffic study, and now they're in this bind?
Well, I know he keeps saying that, and I, of course, didn't stop him when he said that, but it is at the discretion of the board. So my recommendation was that they require the study.
Okay, so that doesn't count.
One of the things that I was concerned about is I think the morning peak hour is actually going to create a larger degradation in the level of service, because there's more trips coming out during the AM peak from the site, whereas in the afternoon and on Saturdays, most of those trips are coming into the site. So I'd be interested to see what the AM does. We're certainly going to be having discussions with PennDOT, so I think it's appropriate to kick the can down and discuss this with PennDOT before we get to the final, and then come up with some alternatives or some discussion on it.
What would they possibly do to, to mitigate that?
I don't know. When, when I initially came in with the TIS, I wasn't sure where they would be with the auxiliary lane, and I wasn't sure we might have, I thought that they might meet the warrants for a left-turn lane, which would give them the option... they might meet the warrants for a left-turn lane, which would give them the option of a two-stage exit from the site. When you have that center turn lane along there that allows motorists to come out, move into that center turn lane and wait until a gap of traffic occurs, and then to move back into it. So there may be nothing that they can do, but I definitely think it's worth considering the right-of-way.
So how do we make a motion tonight if we wanted to, you know, approve this subject to, what do we say?
So work it out with staff.
So work, okay, fine. Okay.
So I, what's, do you want to go ahead?
I think if you want the right-of-way thing, it should be expressed in the motion.
Yeah, we're eliminating, we're recommending with the exception of that. Is there on a-
No, 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 no.
Don't want to grant the waiver of the right-of-way.
Right, we're accepting that.
He didn't ask for a waiver. His contention is they don't need to provide it. So he didn't ask for it.
Well, I did both, but I can see that you're not going to recommend the waiver, so I'm prepared to move on.
Yeah, so I'm going to move that we recommend approval of this plan, subject to the applicant complying with all staff comments, with no waivers granted.
I thought you wanted to spell out that the right-of-way be provided.
Correct.
Yeah, and that the 40-foot right-of-way be, additional right-of-way be provided by the applicant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next one is the amendment to the Municipal Services Use Ordinance.
Great, thank you. The ordinance that is in front of you was adopted a few years ago, and at that time, we had envisioned this ordinance applying to projects specifically like this one. As we started looking at this project coming in, and the exact wording previously didn't reference principal uses but accessory uses, and on this particular lot, the library is a principal use of the lot, so we didn't want any issues coming up as this project moved through the approval process. So we figured it's best, instead of having them go through the zoning hearing board, amend the ordinance to address the true intent of what we had envisioned this ordinance to apply for. Thereby, we've added the language that's highlighted, principal and/or accessory uses, and then specifically referencing in subsection A, parking lots, parking structures and lots and libraries. And that's the extent of the revisions to this ordinance.
Kevin, in adding parking structures, is that just in case down the road, we get to a point where the township would like to build a parking structure, or have the, if we inevitably build or have one?
Yes.
So save yourself the trouble down the road?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other board questions? Any public comment? Any board comment? Do I have a motion?
So moved that we recommended the acceptance of ordinance number 2016-4.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
We don't pass all of them so easily.
Next is the PLO ordinance amendment. Still with us, Steve?
Yes, we did. We did.
All right, one more, one more hang in there.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to be back. Spent like five months over the second half of last year going over a draft PLO zoning ordinance amendment. You directed final changes, revisions to that ordinance out of your November meeting. Since that time, we were requested to have some feedback from township staff and consultants on that version. We've received feedback, we've made some modifications based on that feedback, and I'm here to go over perhaps some of the key modifications that were made to that November 2015 version that you reported out on, and get any kind of feedback or commentary that you would like. We haven't had, I guess we did get a little bit of written commentary from Lloyd Goodman's team, haven't gotten anything in writing yet from Penn Medicine or Brandywine in terms of the property owners involved, but that's where it stands right now.
Are you expecting comments from them?
Yes, I've had telephone conversations with all three property owners, and they've all expressed interest in providing some written comments, and there may even be commentary tonight following any presentation here. So, yeah, there's continued following of what's going on and interest in the ordinance.
And how long have they had? I mean, it seems to me like this has kind of been hanging around for a while. I'm a little surprised they haven't checked in by yet. Do you find that unusual, or?
Well, we've had input at different stages of this process from all three property owners.
Okay.
Written input from all three properties, and in-person discussions with all three property owners. It hasn't happened most recently in all three cases, but at some stage during this process, whether before we went through the five months here, during those five months, or since those five months, since November, we've had input from all three property owners. There may still be a little bit more to come.
But all the big, not that we're like we need all their approvals or anything, but it was nice to hear that, you know, that they've expressed all their large concerns to you. Do you feel that way?
Yes, yeah, they've expressed them. I'm not sure if we've addressed all of them to their satisfaction, but that's-
I just, we're spending all this time, I just don't want to come down to the very end and somebody has this huge objection that, you know, they had a chance to vent.
Steve, real quick, from the notes that I read on your memo, this didn't actually, when it left us a few months ago, I thought it was actually going to go to the Board of Commissioners for a conversation, a discussion, to kind of get a sense of if our work was heading in remotely the right direction. And from the memo I read, it doesn't seem that it, and from my recollection of board members, board meetings, it doesn't seem that that happened.
Yeah, we didn't make any presentations to the Commissioners since November.
All righty, so, I thought that's what the plan was.
That was the plan at that time, and I think plans changed.
Clearly, thank you.
Yes.
So I'm just, I'm kind of wondering for myself how much to invest in it, you know, if they haven't even seen it, or maybe the Board of Commissioners indicated they didn't want to see it. I have no idea.
Well, and this might be, you might view this as with staff and consultants input now, kind of fine-tuning what, your review would then fine-tune the version that you directed coming out of your November meeting. With that input, you take one last look at it, and perhaps then it's at a point where it's ready for Commissioners to review, but I can't guarantee that.
So out of our suggestions or comments, have you incorporated them all, or do you want to tell us which ones you have and haven't?
As we went through each meeting, and I think maybe July through November, there were directions given by this board to us to make revisions to the ordinance, which is what we did each month. And we came back to you and said, and confirmed that those changes were made. We had further discussions, because I think we were kind of, those discussions were kind of chunk by chunk. You know, different topics got addressed at different evenings. And then coming out of November, we made the final directed revisions that this board requested to the ordinance. So then we had that kind of final Planning Commission draft, and then we were requested to have some staff and consultants feedback provided. And so the track changes that you're seeing are really kind of the product of that feedback, and a lot of give and take in all cases.
Some of the track changes are from us and some are from staff, or they're all what happened after that?
These are all what happened after your November meeting.
Okay, good, now I understand, thank you.
Yep, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Kathy.
Working from memory, one of our major concerns was the traffic neutrality. Have we arrived at a good formula on that? That's one question. Two, one of the problems we ran into was defining the either gross floor area related to impervious, and how the two, is it site coverage, or building coverage, or, and I see it sort of goes back and forth on here. Maybe you can clear that up a little bit. My concern is, I don't want weasel words in there that are undefined, where people can get away with more impervious than what we intend. And so what are your thoughts on that?
Well, we proposed, and then what you're seeing in here is a revision to the terminology. We had included the concept and a new definition for lot coverage, which goes beyond impervious. It's really-
And determining parking also.
You know, the definition is really about the intensity, the coverage of the property, regardless of what kind of coverage it might be, pervious or impervious. And then in looking at the, you know, the nature of the properties in the PLO district, lot coverage kind of connotes the kinds of properties you were looking at tonight. Site coverage really talks about parcels of, you know, 10, 15, 20 acres in size. So that was just a change in the term being used. The definition was still the same as originally proposed.
They can be used interchangeably, site coverage and lot coverage?
Well, now, now the term is site coverage.
And that would be used in both a smaller lot and a very large development?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that will be defined properly in the ordinance?
And it is, it is defined, and has been reviewed by the township solicitor.
All right, thank you.
Steve, actually, that's one of my biggest questions about this, because the words site and site coverage are only in your PLO district, and so they're not, I am actually, that was one of the things I wrote about, I'm concerned about the inconsistencies with the use of the site and lot, and site coverage and lot coverage, because lot is the only word even defined in the overall zoning ordinance. Site isn't, site coverage isn't, lot coverage isn't. And so I don't know how they could be used interchangeably, and my concern is that an applicant would come in and say, well, they're using the definition site coverage, or they're using the definition lot coverage, whichever one is more advantageous to them in their particular instance, because, for instance, site coverage doesn't include, it includes a lot of things, but it doesn't talk about along with the required open space, which is a definition of lot. So I'm just, I want to, it's in the definition for lot, is that all these things along with the required open space. So, still trying to, I get it, I get what you're saying in terms of, I think of more of a lot, as, you know, many of the projects we saw tonight, and that a site is a more expansive piece of property, don't get me wrong. I just want to make sure that we have it very tight about how each term can be used, and would those definitions for site and site coverage be better placed in the overall zoning definitions in, at the beginning of the book, I think it's 280-4, versus just part of PLO? And that's more of a, what do you think about that, or did you talk with the solicitor about that? I don't have a strong opinion about it, I just know I was a little confused about that.
Yeah, I think the interchangeability was only, my answer was only intended within the PLO, because that's what this ordinance amendment is about. But the definitions that are being added, or proposed to be added, are being added into the definitions at the very beginning of your zoning ordinance, so it would be in addition for the whole ordinance. Now, the term site coverage may not be referred to currently in all the zoning districts of the ordinance, other than as it is specifically here in the PLO. And if that needed to be modified to, for it to work better within the overall ordinance, we could certainly work that through.
Just a question, why do we need a new definition?
Well, what we're looking at is, or what we've tried to do is very simply differentiate between open space and property site coverage. One of the things we've heard about the PLO time and time again is we want it to be a green area, a green space, that that becomes a highlight, a unique feature of the PLO. And so what we've tried to say is, okay, there's two aspects to this, open space, and then non-open space. And non-open space is site coverage, whether it's a swimming pool, which may not be considered impervious coverage, especially in your stormwater ordinance, or whether it's a deck, or a sidewalk, or a parking lot. It's all coverage, and it's all part of the intensity that I think you were talking about with this last plan on Lancaster Avenue. It's coverage that's not open space. So our proposal is to talk about site coverage in terms of just the entire gamut of features that are used to develop property and cover the ground. Whether they're pervious or impervious is a stormwater issue, not a zoning issue, and that's why we're promoting that site coverage terminology.
It gets even so confusing to me that within the definition of site coverage, you say a measure of the intensity of the use of a lot measured, and I don't know why you wouldn't use the word site, if you're talking about-
That, I appreciate you pointing that out, that should be changed.
Okay, and then in the definition for site, there is a slight typo just in the term on which is duplicated, at least in-
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so I think that that's, and I guess my other thought about the definition of site, and the devil's in the details, but this was literally one of the things I really had highlighted, because I don't want to create a situation where we bring in a new definition and it creates a confusion or a backdoor or whatever, is that a site can be multiple lots, if I'm reading this correctly, whereas a lot is a single parcel. Is that your intention? Steve, is that your intention?
Mm-hmm.
That a site can have multiple lots?
Multiple parcels of land, yes.
Okay, but a lot is just, in all cases, is just one parcel?
One lot.
One parcel.
With separate property boundaries, yeah.
Okay. So that's a big difference. Pardon me? Yeah, no, I get that, but that's part of the, that's a big distinction here, is that a site can be multiple lots. So we would now start to think about the Villanova, as the Villanova site, it had multiple lots that all, I don't know, does that mean that you would not now need to do a lot consolidation if you wanted to use the word site and site coverage?
The zoning PLO, though, right?
Well, again, so these are all put in four, these are all in 284s, in 280-4, which is overall zoning definition. I thought they just applied to PLO, site and site coverage, but given that they've been added to 280-4, they could be used throughout the township. So you're now saying-
Is the word site going to show up in any of the other stuff, or?
Well, that's kind of the point of why I'm reasoning this, even though it's 10:30 and I'm really tired, is that this was the biggest note I had throughout this whole thing, is that those definitions could start to create a squishy area. You know, you can now develop on a site-
Well, other than improved surfaces, everything here is impervious. So what are we considering an improved surface? Because everything else there would be impervious. Everything listed, it's impervious coverage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because you didn't put in required open spaces.
Well, you could have a parking area that's-
We don't, we don't count them. We still count as impervious, under the code.
So under this definition, you can improve your site and use the word site coverage and not have to provide required open space, because site coverage doesn't require it. Our lot definition does, but not our site or site coverage definition.
I'm reading the definition of lot. I don't know that the definition of lot requires open space.
It says together with the required open spaces.
Yeah, if it's required somewhere else, right?
What do you mean?
It's not, I mean, it's a broad definition. Not every zoning district that you have requires open space.
Oh, I understand that. No, I knew that, John. It's just that if we don't, do you not see a circumstance where somebody could opt to use, well, here's my site, and here's my site plan, and try to obfuscate-
And a site could be more than one lot.
Correct, so I just-
And they could not even actually be doing anything on one of those lots and just use it as a countermeasure, is that what you're saying?
I just don't know what the benefit of adding in more terms that could be interchanged is.
I think, I think the issue that- I think the issue that maybe ought to be examined, just to make sure with definitions, is this particular PLO use, this mixed use, uses the term site, site area, as it's defined. I don't know whether it's used anywhere else in any other similar type of use, so that, there's a possibility there that could confuse somebody.
So maybe then just move those definitions to, specifically to the PLO, site and site coverage, and not put them under the general zoning definitions.
Yeah, it could go there, because it's, the way this is used in this ordinance, sort of a term of art.
Right.
It applies to that use in the PLO. I don't know that it's anywhere else, though, so...
I don't either.
I mean, Steve, is, I mean, is that, in terms of intensity of use in the other zoning districts and other uses, even like the CICD, I don't think we use the term site area.
No.
Do we?
No. No, I think the impervious coverage is...
I mean, one of the things about these new definitions, not to, you know, run away from them, is that we have a lot of old zoning regulations in our zoning ordinance that have always created inconsistencies and problems, and most of us over here would like to just get rid of this zoning ordinance, but you're at the point where, or update it substantially, but you're at the point where this is a build-out community, and it would be just, it would be a 10-year project to do that. So we do bits and pieces. When you have something like this, sort of like the CICD, you almost have to create something totally new without throwing out the whole book. And, I mean, I think that's what this ordinance is intended to do, but if this site coverage definition, and usually you have a definition of site in most zoning ordinances already, we do not.
I'd be an advocate of letting it to PLO, because...
Just move them, yeah.
Yeah, because I just don't understand its impact, you know, with the rest of the township, so. If you're good with that, let's just roll that direction, unless anybody objects.
Yeah.
Well, they have a definition. I mean, there is a definition of a site here.
Yeah, we're just talking about putting it in the PLO versus the general terms.
Well, I kind of understood that's what this was, pretty much just to this PLO.
No, these are for the general.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of understood it to be, it kind of fell in, but it only dealt with really large swashes of land, which is multiuses. I mean, I kind of thought that's what you said.
Well, the PLO certainly, yes, but where this ordinance proposes to amend the definitions is at the front of the zoning ordinance as a whole, and so these terms would apply across the whole ordinance, across the whole township, as this is currently drafted, so...
Well, so on, okay, I'm sorry.
Lot coverage is currently in our ordinance and we're taking it out? It wasn't ever, and we were putting it in and now we're taking it back out? Do we need to put it into our general terms?
Yes, and that's the interesting thing, we don't have lot coverage as a definition in zoning, we have lot. Because in the rest of it, we use impervious.
Yeah, you have impervious surfaces defined in your ordinance.
So...
Currently.
Steve, where this became an issue for me was on page five, Dimensional Regulations B7, where you say maximum site coverage, 45% of the total site area. So that's where the definition now starts to kind of, the art of it kind of starts to make more sense, where the 40%, 45% is all of those things, you know, which all of them really are impervious, with the exception of the water surface of a swimming pool. I mean, that's really the only, the additional change. Everything else is some type of impervious coverage, so is it as accurate to say site coverage or impervious coverage? I mean, impervious coverage wouldn't include a pool, but the, but the site coverage term does, right? So we didn't, there's nothing we missed in that, right?
The only thing wrong, Susan, with that is, again, in parking areas. You know, this week, pavers may include impervious, next week, they may change, because they're constantly changing. Suppose they had a gravel parking area, they could say that's not, that's pervious. So I think you need to define the difference between site coverage and impervious coverage.
But that's one of my questions, that's why I've said, why not say maximum impervious on B7? That's exactly why, that's the note I have.
But pools are considered impervious, and so is gravel.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's a parking area, that's considered impervious.
Pools are not.
Oh, I thought they were in our stormwater.
Well, stormwater is different from zoning, but the surface area of a pool is not included in pervious calculation.
Oh, okay, so that's different.
And does the township not allow for, or not consider permeable pavement of any kind?
We allow for, but you want to get a portion of the credit of the surface void area of the paver, so.
Okay, I mean, in cases where it's 100% credit, if your ordinance is only talking about impervious surfaces, you could have permeable pavement in your entire front yard and still be compliant.
Not from a zoning standpoint, you couldn't.
No, from the impervious surfaces, you could.
No, you couldn't.
I don't think we give any credit for porous...
I think we get partial credit, Kevin?
Do we?
You would get partial credit, and on magnitude of 10, maybe 15% of the area, so you would not be able to do significant paving with pervious.
Kevin, the only problem is, that changes. I mean, you know...
It hasn't.
Oh, it has, it has in the past. It has in the past. There's been different definitions of pervious and impervious, and they've come in and said, well, this material is pervious, this material's not pervious, and then a year later, it changes again. So you kind of really have to define it.
For the last four-plus years, we've always had them, an engineer provide a spec of the surface, we're literally looking at the very surface and whatever the pore ratio is, and for any structural stability, you're, again, at the 10 to 15%.
I understand in the last four years it's been that way, but prior to that, it has in fact changed a number of times. So I'm just saying, just define it, just say, it's so much for this one, and so much for that one in itself, whatever it happens to be at that time, that's what's going to take precedent, I think.
Manufacturers are coming up with new ways to construct these products every day, so, you know, we have the way we calculate it, and then we leave it up to the manufacturer to provide us with that specification.
Well, the whole goal here is to protect open space. Why don't we just define what's open space versus defining what's not open space?
Because it was, we felt it was pretty simple to just say site coverage includes all these things done, and we've done it in other places, so that then just left, and this is pretty comparable to the old must ordinance, in the way it treated building coverage, and then quote-unquote site coverage, and then that left, everything else is open space.
Yeah, so I think that we solved this by just saying, let's move site coverage just to PLO.
Mm-hmm.
And, because a lot of the comments through there flow through, the definition for Dimensional Regulations site coverage flows and is limited in that one, it makes more sense. I just wanted to know why we weren't saying impervious, but, you know, putting those into PLO makes that flow. I have a different question on page five, though.
I have a question while we're still in open space. In some cases, people specify that it has to be public accessible, or it cannot be, you know, environmentally restricted. How do we guarantee that that 45% is in all wetlands, or do we care? So like, so that open space, does it have to be usable open space, or it just has to be physically not developed space? What is our intention with the definition? Are we trying to just make sure that 45% doesn't have some improvements on it, or does it have to be like recreation, or any part, like, do we term any of that, or it's just not built on?
We don't specify whether it has to be used for recreation. The concept of the PLO has been for the development of a mixed use, and with a reasonable amount of open space to complement the buildings. Now, the regulations here in this draft ordinance do talk about some of that open space in the form of either buffer yards in the front, or landscape strips elsewhere that are, whose then description is tied back to the subdivision.
They have to have certain plantings and things like that, so we do have some controls over what's done with that.
Yes.
Okay, fine, that's good.
We're not spelling out it must be recreation, but...
But there are some definitions as to what's done with that space in the buffers.
And there again, trying to provide an attractive-looking set of sites along King of Prussia Road, as well as buffering adjoining uses, especially residential uses, you know, nearby.
I'd just, I'd like to just take inventory of what we have left to do here. It's pretty late, I think we're all a little tired, and I'd just like to understand, do we, at the end of the road, or we got to, I mean, I hate to do this to you, Steve, because you sat all night long, but personally, I would like to table it. If we've got a handful of comments and stuff that's kind of confusing and unclear, is there any reason from the board over there that we cannot table this? Skip has an idea, go ahead.
One thing I would like to see carved out as a separate thing, if it's okay with staff, is a focused one-page or whatever on traffic neutrality. I mean, explaining it, giving us some examples, something, because I didn't particularly see it again.
Okay.
I'm happy with tabling it, I mean, my notes will stay my notes, and the questions, I have one question that's really, I think we need to understand it, about traffic neutrality, if he's going to do a one-pager.
Yeah, we'll just tell them.
Why did you delete the line that we have to, that traffic neutrality shall be maintained throughout the life of all projects, according to the provisions, blah, blah, blah? Why did you delete that we have to maintain? On page seven, why did you delete the line that we have to maintain it? Is it that you addressed it somewhere else, or what?
Yes, we addressed it somewhere else.
Okay, in that whole thing about any change, any use?
Two items below, yes.
Okay, so that's, you feel like you addressed it better there?
He's the substitute, yes.
That was it, thanks.
And in keeping with the solicitor's wishes on that topic.
Even better.
But if you have written, if you have questions or comments, I'd love to get them in writing between now and the next meeting. That would help to speed things along and perhaps get some better addressing of your questions.
And would you also send an email out to all interested parties that, you know, we would like to get all their comments?
And I should have said that before. We sent that out, sent something like that out to everybody in December...
Okay.
...to ask for their input based on, you know, what you had put together, but we'll do it again.
Yeah, just do it again, and that's fine. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, with that, is there any public comment? Okay, is there any old business? Is there any new business?
New business?
Steve said he would take care of that, but go ahead, Skip.
Just a reminder to Steve, when the 20, you know, copies of plans come in that are two by three...
Full-size to the planning, absolutely, for everything that comes through.
You know, our eyes, you know, our collective experience on the board is over 250 years of residency, so, you know, we need all the help we can get.
Yes, sir.
And with that, we will adjourn.
Wait, wait, one other thing. The issue with the ITE manual, can we get that corrected? Can we get that updated and put the right version?
Regina, I do have that as a note, so not to do just a singular update, but when we do some other ones...
But so that it's permanent, so that it always says the current, or whatever?
Correct. I have ITE latest version, that's what it'll be.
Nice, thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
So moved, bye.